Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the October 3rd, 2024 work session meeting of the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors to order. Start off with a flag salute and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and no justice at all.
Okay, let's start off with a roll call, please.
Dr. Baltino?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Ms. Donahue? Mr. Ellin?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Knob? Ms. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mr. Stab?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Seven members present.
Ms. Donahue is here. She unmuted, but we didn't hear her.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So eight members present.
Okay. So, alright. So first off, what we have down is the student government reports. Let's see here. I guess we'll start off with Bucktail. There's Martin. How you doing, Martin? Since Butch isn't here, I'll harass you a little bit, okay? Okay. And Mechanic, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Bucktail has had many exciting things happen in just the first month of school. The applied physics class has had a few projects, including launching the bottle rockets we talked about last time. The class also got to work on and test egg drops, which then had to be incorporated into the rockets and were actually launched yesterday. The band members in that class didn't get to launch theirs yesterday as they're on our Penn State trip. At Penn State, we got to rehearse our concert pieces with some senior PSU band members and music education majors. We then got to watch a symphonic wind ensemble rehearsal of their pieces, which was surreal to watch. Afterwards, we went to lunch and visited the Palmer Art Museum. We all enjoyed some ice cream at the Creamery, then we made our last stop at the Blue Band Building to, of course, watch them rehearse several pieces. The Bucktail tennis team has had a fun and busy season, currently standing at seven and four, and are going to playoffs again. The junior high football team is looking at another undefeated team, standing at four and O so far. The varsity football team has been continuing the grind and working hard every week and has not stopped striving for improvement. Also today, almost all of our band members auditioned to go to district band this year. Bucktail will send at least four band members to this huge event where students are then able to audition again to move on to region band. This year, our very own Kettabisman hopes to move on to region band and choir. A few weeks ago, we had our homecoming game where seniors Talon Diddy and Matty Mason were crowned homecoming king and queen. This Saturday, the annual fall A show will take place at the high school, where students from many grade levels and organizations will showcase their talents and perform acts to give the audience a good laugh. Next weekend, of course, will be the 75th Annual Flaming foliage Festival, where Renovo will transform from its usual quiet self into a bustling festival grounds with thousands of visitors. Bucktail has also had a significant decrease in behavior issues this year, a reduction of 80%. Mr. Plato and the whole team of teachers and staff at Bucktail have been working very hard to make Bucktail better every day. To finish up, we would like to come forward with a few concerns we've heard from students. Spanish classes are really struggling this year as we don't currently have a teacher. Since the course is online for the time being, many of the students are struggling. Students that have high grades in this course in previous years are struggling without a full-time teacher. Students are also asking for access to more in-person subject opportunities like a calculus class and an AP music theory class. Also, another topic drawing attention is band. For the last few years, band has not been a real class scheduled during a full block. Instead, band has been held during win. Win is a very busy time for many students, and this year, win has been reduced to just 30 minutes. Students are regularly pulled out of band for things like testing, club activities, and anything else that can't take up class time. Teachers of other classes are also unhappy with the scheduling of band during win as it interrupts win activities and work for classes. This scheduling is not only hurting our program, our band program, but it is hurting the students in band. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
This trip to Penn State, are you allowed to mention the staff that put that together and helped you folks get there? It sounds like it was a great trip. Because I'd like to thank them, whoever.
Our band director, Brendan Kaylee, he graduated from Penn State, so he has all the contacts and everything to get us there.
Did you guys get to see any Blue Band stuff?
Yeah, at the end of the day before we left, we got to see them perform their songs.
Thank you.
Alright, cool. Okay, next up, for Central Mountain High School, Claire? I won't embarrass you.
I don't believe you.
I think we could at least tell her.
Good evening. My name is Claire Bowman. If you haven't met me yet this school year, I'm the board representative for CMHS, and I have a monthly update from our student government. Recently at CMHS, we celebrated homecoming. Congratulations to Homecoming King, Queen Bryce Brumgarde and Caitlin Bowman. Fall sports are also in full swing, including volleyball, football, boys and girls soccer, and girls tennis. Other activities happening at the high school include rehearsals for Puffs, our fall play, which opens November 22nd. We hope to see you there. We are also preparing for our German exchange students that arrive on October 16th and are excited to send Jaslyn Anderson to Flaming foliage festival in a few weeks. In other news at the high school, this year we have more students than ever participating in CTC and co-op programs. This is great news as it helps many students save up money and get experience in their field while still being in high school. I would also like to bring attention to the large decrease in fights this year. I myself has noticed this, as well as other staff and students have mentioned, they are thankful to see the positive shift in attitude and less fights in the building. We thank the board and our administration for helping this positive change happen. As for student government, we are getting ready for our first election. We have recently held interviews for all candidates that were publicly posted, and we plan to hold elections on October 7th. We also had more students apply to run than expected, which made us feel that our message to students about the importance of student government was being heard. Our weekly meetings with administration we started last year have also continued. All members of the student government feel like we are making great progress and positive changes in our building. One of the important changes we have been working on is the PBIS point system. We have continually discussed this topic within our group and within administration meetings. Since the beginning of the school year, we have started using paper tickets, which was one of our goals. We now see students getting excited about earning points and feeling like they have more value. We are so thankful to administration for listening to us and helping us make this change. We have more topics to tackle on our list, and we are excited to make more positive changes for this school year and the future. Thank you.
Thank you. What, you want me to wish her a happy birthday?
Yeah, happy birthday. There you go.
Alright, alright. There you go. Alright, um, next, we have Katie Owens from the middle school.
Go, girl.
Greetings. I'm Katie Owens. I'm an eighth grader at CMMs and a part of our student government team. I'm here to give you some exciting updates about what's going on at the middle school. Currently, for the month of September, our school is hosting challenges to promote excellent attendance. One of the fun challenges was for each win class to come up with a slogan to encourage attendance. The school's staff and faculty voted on their favorite choice from each of our color teams. Then, families voted on their favorite to narrow down the slogans to one per grade. The winning slogan for fifth grade was Wildcats Run on Being Present. The winning slogan for sixth grade was Eat, Sleep, School, Repeat. The winning slogan for seventh grade was Arrive, Thrive, and Show Your Wildcat Pride. And then the winning slogan for eighth grade was Wildcats Are Tight When Attendance Is Right. In addition to this challenge, color teams are working hard to score touchdowns. This can be achieved by earning yards. Yards are earned by having perfect attendance during win, having the most PBIS present points, along with a few other things. For every touchdown your team scores, there's a reward. Any student who had perfect attendance for the month of September has the opportunity to kick a field goal and throw a pass for additional yards for their team. On the student government front, there have been two significant changes. The amount of students in the club and the election process. Instead of teachers selecting officers directly, like we did last year, students had the chance to vote. The five candidates were selected through a three-step process. First, any students who were interested in joining signed up. Then the teachers narrowed it down to five candidates per grade. The last step was for the students to vote, which occurred Wednesday, October 2nd, which was yesterday. The second change that has been made is while our student government still has four officers, one per grade level, we will also have two members of each grade level representing as congress. This gives our student government a total of 12 members. For the 24 to 25 school year, our CMMs student government club members are Andrew Wolf, Katie Owens, and Aleah Lewis for eighth grade. And then for seventh grade, Levi Nace, Josie Hendershot, and Autumn Guerrero. For sixth grade, it's Maddie Yorchak, Sam Peck, and Caroline Svederes. And then in fifth grade, it's Mia Barth, Peyton Murray, and Henry Hollick. Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Yeah, awesome.
May I ask a question, Chair?
Yeah.
Martin, I think it was you. It's up to you, your group, and your advisors, but you were talking about block scheduling last year. And maybe if it's after you folks discuss it internally, an update next time we see you would be lovely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, next, Hunter Nace. For Central Mountain Middle School? Yeah. Oh, hold it. That's for the presentation?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Alright, my bad, my bad. I thought that was... My bad. Hold on, Hunter. I'll have you back up here in a second, alright? So, okay, hearing about visitors. Do we have any visitors? No? Okay. Let's do the presentation now. Okay. This is... Hunter now? Okay, Hunter. You want to come back up and give a little presentation?
We're actually going to have all of the students come up. They're going to be part of the presentation, so I'll just wanted to introduce our leadership team and Mrs. Anascon, and she was helping organize it, so I'll hand it over to her.
Okay.
I'm gonna give them a second to get lined up because they all have their parts, and they know exactly how they're supposed to be lined up. But just to give you a little bit of insight, so at the middle school, we have a lot of leadership clubs, and when we ask our students to be leaders, as you can see, they definitely line up and want to take part and do all of the things that we ask them to do with a lot of pride in their hearts. And it's a real pleasure to be able to work with such phenomenal students and really great leaders. So the presentation that they're going to be sharing today just highlights a lot of the things that we're doing at the middle school that we're really proud of, and it has been quite a journey to implement a lot of the things that you're going to see here tonight. But they do a lot of the work with making all of these things happen, which is really phenomenal because they're middle school students just rocking it every day that they're there, so we're all really, really proud of the work that they put in.
We have been working hard over the years to continue to improve the culture and climate at Central Mountain Middle School, and it shows. CMMs is a place where we can all create moments that matter. Take a look at what we've been up to. We can't hide a wildcat.
The principals at CMMs set the tone for our building, and they work hard to make us all feel seen, heard, valued, and loved. As a remanentia, Mr. Cardy and Mrs. Fregassi are always visible in our building, and they are constantly interacting with our students and staff in a meaningful way. We love our principals at CMMs.
The staff at CMMs keep the spirit going on in many ways. They love taking good group pictures, participating in spirit days, planning fun events for the school, and showing their wildcat pride every Friday by wearing blue and white and wildcat gear. Our staffly give us many reasons to smile and be proud to be a wildcat.
Every August, our incoming fifth grade students are invited to the middle school to receive a tour of the building, meet the principals and teachers, talk with student leaders, learn about their new schedule and classes, and get their pictures taken. This has become a tradition that fifth grade and their families look forward to as they prepare to enter middle school.
The first day of school is always a lot of fun at CMMs. There are bubble machines at the entrances, high fives all around, and lots of positive energy to get everyone excited for the school year to begin. Teachers plan a variety of team-building activities and spend time getting to know their students in a fun and meaningful way. That makes us feel excited to be back in school.
Throughout the year, we have assemblies that bring our school together. To start the year, we have our annual kickoff assembly. During this assembly, we honor our Central Mountain Middle School staff, review our school-wide core values, and have our first rock, paper, scissors tournament. Last week, we had our mini-thon kickoff assembly.
During this assembly, our mini-thon team taught the school a line dance, shared information about the four diamonds, and led an interactive music therapy activity to showcase the types of programs that are made possible for childhood cancer patients through the money that is raised by mini-thons each year. Our assemblies are always a lot of fun, and we all look forward to them.
At Central Mountain Middle School, we are safe, responsible, respectful, present, and kind. When we reach our goals, we get rewarded. This year, our entire building is focused on attendance and being present. Every day, we are here one step closer to graduation, which is the ultimate goal for all of our students. This Friday, the students who have had perfect attendance for the month of September will have an opportunity to go outside and kick a field goal with the principals. There will be a different reward each month throughout the year to recognize the efforts of our students. Fridays are a lot of fun at Central Mountain Middle School, which motivates students to come to school.
Our CMMs facilitator, Ms. Bose, and school security officer Mauder continue to work together to keep us safe at CMMs. They build positive relationships with students and hold them accountable for their actions. They encourage all of us to make good decisions and help us learn from our mistakes so we can be better students at CMMs and better citizens in our community. They also like to have fun, and they always find ways to bring smiles to our faces.
When we arrive at school after the start of the day and check in at the office, we are greeted with kindness and given a special note to take with us to return to our class. We all have a responsibility to be at school, and sometimes just getting there is a big responsibility. This kind gesture really helps our students feel appreciated for being at school.
Earlier this year, all of our assembly leaders went an entire week without any victory for us, so the seven grade class received an ice cream treat at Central Mountain Middle School. Our students are given additional responsibilities for them to develop the leadership skills. Our students take the lead in assemblies, they help out with announcements, and they practice participating in after-school activities such as go-out events that help raise money for childhood cancer. Our wildcat leaders are everywhere.
One of our favorite things to do at Central Mountain Middle School is celebrate others. We plan various service projects throughout the year to show our appreciation and respect to the people in our building, who are some of the unsung heroes in our school community. This year, our life skills classrooms attended the first-ever Lacy Day Camp, which is a modified version of Camp Cadet. The students at Central Mountain Middle School are given lots of opportunities to show respect in our school and communication, community.
No matter what classroom you go into, you can find teachers sharing their passions with their students. Dedicated students engaging in their learning, and lots of incredible things happen at Central Mountain Middle School. It is truly one of the best places to be. It is a great year to be a Central Mountain Middle School wildcat.
Being kind is key at Central Mountain Middle School. One of our weekly kindness events is High Five Fridays. Our staffly have big blue foam poles that they use every Friday to give high fives and spread positive vibes. This year, we have a different group of high school and middle school students who are ready to welcome everyone as they enter the building. There are always lots of high fives, smiles, and kind greetings every Friday at Central Mountain Middle School.
When the students demonstrate being present, responsible, respectful, safe, and kind, they earn PBIS points. Students can use their points to purchase items from their teachers' classroom stores. They can also purchase snacks, lunch bunches with their friends in teachers' classrooms or the courtyard, and they can attend quarterly school-wide rewards. Today, our first snack court day, so members of our PBIS student team and our life skills classes went around to each classroom and offered snacks to the students. It was a perfect treat on a club day. We are currently planning our first quarterly reward, which will be a fun tailgate with lots of team-building games for students and staff to enjoy. Our PBIS rewards are a huge success.
Every month, the CMMs staff select students to be Wildcat of the Month and Leader of the Pack. These students are constantly meeting our school-wide expectations and going above and beyond at school. Our students still will always be selecting staff members that they would like to recognize for their efforts and dedication to our school.
At CMMs, we hold monthly and/or quarterly recognition rallies to recognize the students who are respecting the core values at our school and meeting our school-wide expectations for attendance, academic excellence, positive behavior, character development, and leadership in our school community. We always recognize our student athletes and other groups in our school who are striving to be the best they can be. We're all proud to be a wildcat, and we enjoy our fun rally events.
We would like to appreciate... We'd like to thank you for your time this evening for listening to our presentation. We would also like to thank you for your support and dedication to making our school the best it can be. Please continue to support us in all of the Keystone Central District so that way we can find success throughout our academic journey. We appreciate any positive feedback you can provide that will help us continue and improve. There will be many good things happening at CMMs and across the district. Thank you. Any questions? What is it?
Rock, paper, scissors tournament. I mean, we all know how to play rock, paper, scissors, but how do you turn that into a tournament?
What we do is, well, on the kickoff assembly, all of the students will stand up, they'll find a partner, and you'll play until the final four, keep playing best out of three, actually, no, one round. Till the, and out of the four, the final four will go up on the stage, they'll play their two matches, and then they'll play at the best out of three, and then the final two will play, and the champion will be decided after that round.
Oh, that's cool.
It's match play, Roger.
Yeah, there you go. Alright, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you all and all the staff. I just want you to know something. We're school board members, and we're on the backend, okay? You guys are on the front lines, and the school is successful depending on you folks. And I'm really, really proud of you and all the teachers and everything, because this is a huge, I've almost been here five years. And I want to say I'm really proud of everything that's developed. Like I said, we're on the backend. Okay, and you guys are on the front lines, so thank you.
Alright. Alright. Okay, so later on in the agenda, we're going to be looking at that character strong stuff coming up again, and... Okay. Alright. Well, then. We just go ahead and go with June Admin Retreat while they're doing that? Sure. Okay, let's do the June Admin Retreat presentation, please. Okay. Um... There you go. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I think you were gonna kick it off right after we went in.
So, in... One of the things that is under my responsibility is kind of looking at the district as a whole and looking at our comprehensive plan, our mission, our vision, the things that we value, our profile of a learner, and from kind of the what's going on in the district perspective, try to provide some support structures across the district so that we can do a better job of reaching all of those goals. One of the things that's prominent in our comprehensive plan is our multi-tiered system of supports structure. And in that structure, as you know, it requires a robust tier-one system where there's a really powerful set of learnings that every student gets. And through that, we hope to reach 80 to 85% of the students so that they can be successful with just that level of structure and instruction and all that sort of thing. And then we have tier-two and tier-three that provide interventions for students who need progressively more support in addition to that robust tier-one. What I noticed in the first six months or so of being here is that one of the things that we needed to really strengthen was that tier-one support. And in the research, there is an idea called universal design for learning. And from a really broad standpoint, universal design is that idea that you design structures and systems so that everyone has accessibility to whatever it is. In buildings, you have 36-inch wide doors to get in and ramps with a particular pitch in order to allow folks that have mobility concerns to access the building. There's a similar idea in education called universal design for learning. And that is a way of thinking about how to educate so that, again, that tier-one, 80% of the students are able to reach the educational goals that are set forth in all of the things that you all enact in terms of policy and the state says that are our core learning standards. So, at the beginning of the summer, the administrators, we went to a different place. There's a lot of research around getting a bunch of people to a different place and learning something really deeply together. So we spent a couple of days really kind of diving into this idea of universal design for learning. What it is, why we should be thinking about it, the difference it can make for students, and the research and evidence base that's behind that. And so the administrators have come here today to kind of talk a little bit about the experience that we had, some of the things they've learned, the impact that it's made on them as leading learners, and the difference that it's making in their schools.
Thank you. So we're gonna talk a little bit, go ahead, Colton, to the next slide, please. This is one of the metaphors that we looked at in... Is this microphone working?
Yes.
Okay. This is one of the metaphors that we started out with, when we started looking at, really starting to conceptualize what is universal design for learning. Because for most of our administrative team, this is also new content and new learning. And that's really the point of our administrative retreat, is to learn together as a team on whatever content it is that we need to push our comprehensive plan forward. So when we look at this ski picture, right, we are assuming that we're starting at the top of the mountain where the little skier is, right? And as educators, you know, we're using this metaphor that at the bottom of the hill is the end goal. And so how many different ways are there to get down this mountain? Anybody want to throw out a number? How many different ways are there to get down this mountain?
Sixty.
One, okay. One, why?
You go down.
You pick your path and you go, right?
Six or sixty, I don't know.
Sixty, okay. Yeah, and I don't know that there's a right or wrong answer, right? Maybe it's infinity, because you really, I don't know. But one of the things that we talked about was that this ski slope is sort of a metaphor for student learning in that our learner is at the top, the learning goal is at the bottom, and how learners get there is different, and the path that we choose is different. Some of us, if we're the... Um, some of us, if we're at the top of that ski slope, we're just going the fastest and the quickest way down, right? But that takes skill, and that takes experience. You don't go just down a black diamond when you're skiing for the first time. Others prefer a slow and gradual pace. Um, and so this is really meant to represent the different types of learning um, and the, and the styles and the approaches that students might have. But at the end of the day, our goal is the same, which is to get down to the bottom of the mountain. And so this really sort of represents the idea of UDL in the sense that we have to purposefully plan for the fact that learners are variable and that they are different, and that when we design things, we need to keep that in mind.
Next slide. All right, one of the, uh, biggest components of UDL is student choice. So as Megan was talking about, the, the variability of learners is, part of that is we want to make sure that learners have a choice in the way they are learning or being able to present information because not all of us are the same. So here's another metaphor. This time, uh, we're taking a look at the, maybe, imagine going to the zoo or anyplace, it doesn't have to be a zoo. So if a group of you went to a place like, like this and you had to find your way around, there are many options. One of you may say, you know what, I'm going to look at that large sign that's posted throughout different parts of the park, and I can see you are here, I need to go here, and that's, that's plenty, that may be, maybe all you need. Uh, moving over to the right, you may have, uh, a lot now with technology on a cellphone, you may download a cellphone map of where you're going, and that might be more for you. I know if you ask my, ask my parents to look at a cellphone map of a zoo, it would not happen and it would not be successful. So that wouldn't be probably their choice. Uh, the third one to the right is an interesting thing, is it's kind of the gamification. So, you know, if you go to the San Diego Zoo, they now have especially for kids because everything, they're so into games, maybe a choice is having a, having a map with games on it where you earn points going to different locations. That's right for some, it's not right, not right for others. Uh, going down to the bottom left, maybe just getting someone to give you a tour. So that is an option where you, someone, you know, maybe you don't be one, you're not, you're not good at maps, you're not good at the visual, but someone just showing you and telling those personal stories might be what connects to you. Uh, and finally, there's a good old-fashioned foldable map for some, that's the way to go. So the point is with UDL is we want to provide learners with the choice to choose what's right for them, and that's the, what we know will make them most successful.
So really what it comes down to for UDL is we, you just wanna make sure that the information, the knowledge is accessible to every student, no matter where they are, no matter which slope they choose to go down, or no matter how they prefer to access that information at the zoo. And that has a foundation in three different areas: representation, expression, and engagement. So when we think about the representation, how, do some students want to see or read the information? Whether that be bullet points on a poster, whether that be reading a book, whether that be watching a video. Does some students need to feel and interact with it? Um, and how about hearing it? Sometimes a student just needs to hear that information. So, you know, when we talk about the representation of the knowledge, it can be in many different forms, and students need to access that in different ways to be able to learn. And then there's the expression, how is the student going to show their relationship with that knowledge? Is it going to be writing an essay, which for some students is what they're most comfortable with? They love the feeling of writing down words. For some students, that is creating a work of art that represents, you go to that zoo, you see all of these animals, you learn about them, and you create a work of art that represents that knowledge. So that expression is very important. And then we get to the engagement. What is the environment in which they're going to learn that information? How are we gonna set up the classroom so that that knowledge is accessible to all learners? How are we gonna make sure that all students feel safe and prepared to learn in that classroom? So it comes down to those three different areas: the representation, the expression, the engagement.
Um, so when we look at the, the goals of UDL, I think Deb, um, hit a lot of those really well. Um, but UDL is a way to make learning work for everybody. Um, it helps create the classrooms where everybody has a fair chance to learn. And when we're talking about, um, giving everybody access to, to tier-one quality instruction, it's really what it's about, giving everybody the chance to learn this content. Um, so on the slide here is just some of the, the tenants of the, um, of the framework, that it's purposeful, that it's, um, reflective, resourceful, authentic. Uh, but I think Deb hit a lot of those, um, key points in, in the previous slide. Um, Dr. Redman, I think also kind of, um, beautifully set us up for this of why we're talking about universal design for learning. Um, this isn't new, this is decades-old research that shows that this works. Um, it is not the newest fad or a trend or something that, um, we're just trying because we think it might work. Um, it is deeply rooted in our comprehensive plan, it is how we hope to meet the comprehensive plan goals. Um, so it is really, um, MTSS is the what, right? We talk a lot about MTSS, but UDL is the how. Um, it's the strategies that get us to meeting those, um, tier-one needs and setting that MTSS framework up to work.
Tough to follow. Um, I think they've touched upon so many aspects of UDL, and, uh, one of the things that I took away from our time together as an administrative team was, it challenged me to think beyond my way of thinking and how my way of instructing might have looked, um, in my classroom. So it challenged me as a leader to also then lead my staff loyalty in a, in a way that maybe I hadn't done previously. You know, I, I like to watch things, but some of my staff would rather read something or hear something. So from a leadership standpoint, it really allowed me to reflect on how will I support my staff to, uh, in the end game, push our mission of creating a, um, a lifelong learner that, that ties into what we're looking for, for our keystones for success. Um, at the elementary level, I, I'm fortunate, our elementary teachers do this quite naturally. Um, but sometimes I think we drift away from what they're really good at, and UDL has helped bring us back to those things. So breaking down barriers for our learners, inclusivity, and it's okay to play, right? And, uh, getting back to some of those things that, uh, you know, highlight different strengths that different students have. So that was my takeaway from UDL, and one of the things that, uh, really stood out for me at our administrative retreat was we walked around the place we were at, and, uh, I never had taken time to realize all the accommodations that we see every day, and we just walk right past them. Um, and I think that was eye-opening to me, that it's our job as educators to put all the accommodations in place that we possibly can so that all of our learners feel comfortable in the space they're learning. So that was a, a takeaway I had.
And secondary is always a little different. Elementary, as Mr. Mr. Barth said, is, teachers tend to be more, it's more natural for them in that level. Secondary traditionally is, uh, teachers have often been more, more traditional in their approach, the stand and deliver instruction, and the student sits there and has to write an essay or pass a test. So when I think of what UDL makes me think of is, uh, I'll just say my big brother, Tom, he's a very successful builder. But when he, if you go back to high school, he struggled, uh, because the approach of, hey, you know, write a paper about this and take this test on this, it was, was not his thing. He, 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 he just struggled throughout high school. But once he had the opportunity to, uh, go into CTE, which is one of the, one of the things that naturally does fit with UDL, and, uh, he was able to express himself with his skills and what he knows, that's where his passion was, was lit. So that's, if you think of how, what we do in CTE, CTE in the secondary level of giving students the chance to maybe choose to work with their hands or choose to show something in another, another way, that's what UDL is helping us at the secondary level is to, to kind of get away from that. You only have to stand and deliver to, uh, there's lots of different ways to show and learn what you know.
And so we left our administrative retreat knowing that this is solid instruction. UDL is solid instruction. So we really were, um, thoughtful about how are we going to bring this back to our schools? And right from the get-go, when we had our first in-service day, we started working with our teachers in an environment where we gave them some power to talk about what does good instruction look like? And they had the conversation about different styles, different engagement with the materials, and they know these things, so we didn't have to tell them, you have to do this. They already started talking about the ways in which they do that, and we modeled for them. We put them in a room with different types of teachers, teachers who teach some of our elective classes that are more hands-on, teachers who teach our current technical education classes that allow for a different type of learning, but also with math teachers who are really good at getting students in small groups based on what they already know and can do, and a different group of students who already knowing can do this part, and working with, how do you make instruction work for all of those different learners? So we took this back to our teachers and introduced it without forcing it on them to say, this is a strategy you have to use. They really walked in there with the understanding that we do this, and it's what works in our classrooms.
So when we think about our next steps, Colton, the next slide, please. Um, we're going to keep, continue to deepen our own understanding of UDL as an administrative team. Um, it was really the first time that we took a deep dive into it, and we're gonna continue to circle back to that throughout the year as an administrative team, um, so that we can continue, we can't lead it unless we deeply understand it. And that was one of the powerful things about our time together in June was that we were able to kind of be together as a learning community as administrators, and we don't often get the opportunity to do that because we're all busy in our own individual roles. Um, so it was really powerful just to sit in the room with our colleagues and kind of, you know, push our sleeves up and learn together. Um, and that's really, really valuable time together that we don't often get. Um, so we're gonna continue, like Deb said, to help our staff understand the tenants of UDL and how we can, um, incorporate that into our instruction, but we wanna do it in an organic way. We don't want it to be this year's new best thing, right? So we want to be really intentional about that. We wanna model it, they're all, we're all already doing that in some way, um, which I think is fantastic. Um, and then we're working, we'll work throughout the year to create professional learning opportunities for our teachers that we lead, um, as we deepen our understanding of UDL as well. Um, and we will continue to, like I said before, um, continue our professional learning, um, with the same presenter that we had in June so that we can continue to learn and grow, and then therefore push out to our staff. And so as we learn as administrators, our goal is to lead our teachers and our staff in that learning as well. So it's really sort of a exponential learning, um, learning situation. So those are our next steps, and we're excited about that, and I think we're all, um, optimistic that, um, we're taking the right steps in the right direction to really solidify instruction and, and have it look the, the way that we want it to for kids.
Any questions? Elizabeth?
I wrote it down, stay focused. Um, and I hate to read, but I'm gonna read. Um, institutionalized governance and teaching burns us all out. Um, staff, the kids, um, this seems like a really good tool to redirect us away from institutionalized education. Um, I'm really excited about this, and thank you. I look forward, we all look forward to updates.
Is this? Is this?
No, 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 that's okay.
I have proof, I can do it.
I know you can.
Okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
Is this a program that is going to continue on?
So it, it's not a program per se, it's a way of thinking about education.
Right.
So it's not a, an off-the-shelf program that we're buying and we're saying that we're gonna do this. It's not a, a curriculum per se. It's a way of thinking, and yes, it is something that we're going to continue to do.
Can it be done to save cost? Uh, webinars and done here, is there a reason we have to go out? And were people allowed to come home at night, or did they have to stay there? Because I've heard some controversy.
Okay, uh, well, we did encourage folks to stay because there's a significant portion of this that was, uh, team-building, although there were some folks who weren't able to for a variety of reasons, and that was acceptable. Um, in terms of how we're going to plan and enact this going forward, uh, we haven't come down on a particular model through the rest of this year. Uh, we're, we're going to be doing, uh, more of the, uh, distance learning kind of a model.
Okay, cause we just, we've got a budget to watch.
Of course we do.
And that's a lot of money to be.
We, and we didn't pay for this out of, out of grant funding and not out of the, the general fund.
Well, it's still taxpayer money. I just wanna know, it sounds great and all that, but I just wanted to know, there's certain ways that we can cut back on things.
And I, I think it's worth noting too, the particular grant money that was used had to be earmarked for, um, professional development in the area of learning loss. Um, and so as a result of some of the COVID money, it had to be earmarked, it had to be spent on very specific line items. Um, and so when we're talking about, um, coming out of COVID, thinking about how to get kids back to where we want them to be and moving forward, is a perfect opportunity to, to talk about this and sort of check that box of the grant requirement to say that we're doing professional learning with our administrators on something that we believe is gonna make an impactful, um, have an impact on student learning, so.
Understand that, I just, I look at it as fifty-eight hundred dollars of that could have been spent towards something else under this thing. That's all I'm saying.
And, and I agree, I know we're, I know the thought on that, that, yeah, that is a lot of money, and it's, it, it could have been done in a different way. We could have had, um, someone from the IU maybe who knew a little bit about it, but one thing I would say that I just appreciated is, it's not often that when there's something that's going to be so foundational to what we're doing, that the person teaching us is one of the gurus of it. So that's probably the first time in my experience in education where I had someone that knowledgeable to help me. So it, it's nice, you know, when you have someone who's, they're, they are claimed experts, but they don't, they've learned it from a book, and they're teaching you, you ask them a question, and they, they often can't answer it on a level, and you're like, hmm. But here where you're like, all right, well, tell me about this, what do we do in this situation? And you're like, wow, you're dealing with a person who did the research and, uh, did the studies, and that helped me. Whether it's worth the cost, I don't know, I guess that's all how, how we look at it, but I, I appreciated that as, as an administrator, but.
Well, it's cool, I, ten thousand dollars, they better have been able to answer questions for two days.
Elizabeth?
Yes, I mean, that's something maybe the finance committee might wanna consider in the future is, it might help with the transparency, and so everyone understands there's all these different grants, and different grants can only be used for certain things, and if those were all known to everyone, then all of a sudden, when something comes up, it's easy to justify it. So I think that does cause a little tension when we say, oh, well, it's just paid for by grant money. Well, what are the other options for that grant money? And there may not be any, then we're all on the same page, but I, I, you know, I support.
Yeah, I support everybody, and I support what we're doing. I'm just trying to look at, can we use some of that money for other better things?
Spread it out a little bit, but you brought a great presentation, so maybe moving forward.
I think sometimes it is beneficial to get your team together away from the buildings, away from the, the everyday stuff that you have to deal with, and get into a totally different setting. And so you can, you can focus completely on the task at hand, and, and exactly what you guys did, I, I don't think it was an inappropriate use of the money. I think that it was, when you're talking about a concept like this, it's not, like, like Dr. Redmond said, it's not a, it's not a canned program. It is a way of approaching instruction, and as you said, lots, all kids learn in many different ways. And if you have a chance to step away from everything as a team and build some, build some camaraderie, that's what it's about. And I don't think, you know, it's not like this happens all the time. You, once, once in a while, once in, you know, you could probably do it here, true. But I think that the chance to get away from everything, away from the, the usual stuff, and have a totally different environment, I, I think that, I don't think that was an appropriate use of that money. I think it was money, it was well-spent, especially if you can get that information across and get that concept and get buy-in from your teachers. and get that concept and get buy-in from your teachers. I think that's very important, so. I think it's, it's, it's a, you know, a great way to, to get your teachers to understand the, you know, the various ways that you, you want to approach the instruction, so.
Elizabeth.
Thank you, um, thank you, Jeff. I think we're all in agreement about that, every once in a while you have to be in a new environment to experiencing something new, we all agree that. And I hear Chris's point is like, well, why couldn't they just drive home if they wanted to? But that's none of my business right now. But what I'm saying is lesson learned. Dr. Redman will figure it out from here in the staff, if they don't want us, you know, but I don't think that this will be repeated that way again. Um, so lesson learned and I'm excited to see more of this.
Okay.
I'm excited to see more, I just want to look, check some balance.
Thank you very much, guys.
And one last thing, Elizabeth, you had asked earlier about the connection to the Blue Band. Are you aware that our administrative team has two Blue Band, Blue Band alumni?
No, I didn't, how are we gonna know, how do we know this?
Mr. Cardy and Ms. Fergazi are both Blue Band alumni.
I didn't know that, thank you.
They both performed in the alumni Blue Band this weekend at the homecoming game.
Very cool.
I have a question for Dr. Hall.
Yeah, Megan, Megan.
Where was that mountain? Where was that mountain?
What mountain is that?
I'm not sure. It wasn't Tussie, yeah.
Looked like a nice place to ski.
I know, I'm guessing it was probably Colorado, right, Vermont maybe? But definitely not Central Pennsylvania.
Nothing I recognize in Colorado.
Okay, so later on in the uh agenda, there's a uh, under the curricular co-curricular, there's a Character Strong K through twelve SEL curriculum that is being brought back because it went through the uh curricular, co-curricular committee. Um, there's a presentation that goes along with that and there's, since there's students here, I'd like to move that to the present, that portion of it, to the presentation now and have that, so that way these kids can get out of here. They don't have to stick around till like almost the end of the meeting. All right, so does anybody have any
No, absolutely.
issues with this?
Why don't go, yeah, go do it.
All right. Christina? You need another one? Okay.
Okay, thanks for having us back. Um, I came back today with some friends. The last time we were here, we gave you information on the Character Strong curriculum. And there were some questions about the curriculum. Um, we were asked to do a little bit more research, get a little bit more feedback and um to take it through the co-curricular, curricular committee, which we have done. So we find ourselves in front of you today and we find ourselves here because we're very passionate about the program and want to share our newfound data with you. So, next slide, Colton. So I, we want to start with the message from the Surgeon General. Every child's path to adulthood, reaching developmental and emotional milestones, learning healthy social skills and dealing with problems is different and difficult. Many face added challenges along the way, often beyond their control. And there's no map and there's no road that is ever straight. But the challenges to, in today's generation of young people face are unprecedented and uniquely hard to navigate. And the effect of these challenges have had on their mental health is devastating. So this is from Dr. Vivek Murthy, the Office of the Surgeon General. And so I share that with you because that is exactly um what we have to prepare our students for. And this curriculum that we're offering, um, we're presenting tonight will help us achieve just that, will help us prepare our students for those curvy windy roads, for those unexpected situations that they'll find themselves in. Um, and that will help achieve, um, you know, functional citizens within our community that will allow them to have great success. Next slide. So the last time I came to you, we talked about the five competencies that are being taught during social emotional learning lessons. Self-awareness, self-management, self-social awareness, relational, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. And so we asked our staff, when your students come to us, when our students come to us, are they coming to us um with adequate knowledge and ability to go through these types of skills? And you'll see that um the majority of our students, eighty six point four percent of our students come to us with a deficiency in self-awareness. Eighty nine percent come with a deficiency in self-management. Seventy seven come with a deficiency in social awareness. Is it fifty four in relationship awareness? If, or eighty one, sorry, I'm reading the wrong number. Eighty one percent in relationship awareness and eighty percent in responsible decision-making. Only three percent of our staff felt that their students come knowing all of this and they don't need to have any type of intervention. So that's pretty telling um as to why it's important for us to be teaching SEL in our schools. Because I know that was also a question that came up, is why do we have to do this? We have to do this because we owe it to our students to, because these are life skills that they're expected to know when they leave us. And they're coming to us deficient in those areas, so we need to make sure that we are teaching them these skills so that they can be successful. And when we polled our staff, in your professional opinion, do you believe that students need to be taught SEL skills? That's a pretty resounding number, ninety seven percent of our staff feel that our students need to be taught these skills. So just like when our students come to us and they don't know how to read, we teach them how to read. When our students come to us with behavioral deficits, we teach them how to behave. We teach them, what is the appropriate way to get something that you want when you want it right now and you can't have it right now? So along those lines, this is all those other five competencies that we had just talked about. We have to teach those to our students so that they can be efficient. So this is our student data. So we, what we did this time was we took a second step lesson and the Character Strong lesson, because second step is our current curriculum that we have in place. And we took comparable lessons on um values. Values was an area that came up during the co-curricular committee that people were concerned that, well, what does that mean, whose types of value? So what we did was, we measured, we lined them all up and then we had a um students do the survey and we had the teachers do the survey following the lesson. And our students, um, I don't know if you can read that, you would have amazing eagle eyes if you could. But it compares the two. So which curriculum would you find more interesting? The Character Strong, um, unanimous, unanimously was the winner there. Do you think second step or Character Strong lesson helped you more in understanding your emotions? They believe the Character Strong one did. Do you think the lesson topic was beneficial for you? Mostly yes, some kind of, and then a no. Which program do you think gave you better tools to solve conflicts or problems with others? And Character Strong led the way there. And was there any other, anything in this lesson that made you feel uncomfortable? No, and the yes, that small portion, yes. Um, one talked about, I don't like to read in class and there, there was an option to read. And one was upset because they were talking about um inequity among students. And so, you know, it was emotional. But nothing um in any of those scenarios that made them uncomfortable. So with us today, we have um three students who have gone through the curriculum and they would like to share their experience with you.
So the students are going to just share um what they liked about Character Strong and if you need them to elaborate at all, feel free to ask any questions and they'll do their best to answer any questions you might have.
Um, I know for me, one of my favorite parts about the Character Strong lessons is we were really able to open up to like the people at our tables and most of the questions that we had to do open-ended answers to, we were all able to openly discuss about and they just allowed us to be able to express ourselves well. Probably we could all answer the questions.
Um, I really liked the hot seat thing that we did where everyone, stop laughing at me. Everyone got a chance to participate and it kept everyone like active throughout the lesson so that you weren't just like sitting there and zoning out. You actually had to get up and answer questions throughout the thing.
Um, I also enjoyed that we got to engage with the other classmates at our tables because whenever we would talk about what our emotions were and our values, we also got to share what we said to our table groups that we were sitting with. And I really enjoyed that because I got to see what other people thought, but I'll also saying what I thought.
Any questions?
Hi, thank you, and please, just relax, it's okay. This is just a question, you don't have to answer it, we're just an estimate. Um, generally speaking, since you've been here, generally speaking, how many hours per day are you looking at some sort of device in your classroom? So let's say you have four classes, would you say you're looking at a screen an hour a day, two hours a day, roughly, just estimate, this isn't science class or?
Don't ask for help, what do you think?
I'd say probably like an hour per class. We definitely do a lot of stuff on the computer and if we're not on the computer, we're definitely doing stuff on the screen.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any different feelings about that? And you feel about, you're about an hour per class already on a screen, okay, thank you.
Okay, a little confused about that, but all right.
What are you confused about?
How often, I was just wondering how that ties in with that C L.
Do you want me to go deeper right now, but I was letting the, I'm gonna let the students.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Let's talk about it.
Yeah, we'll deal with that later.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
And having taught both of the second step and the Character Strong lessons, so the students themselves are not on the computer for these lessons. Um, the Character Strong lesson, there are slides that are projected on the screen for students to see. And then the teacher is leading the discussion through the slides as a visual representation of what we're talking about in class. And I just wanted to elaborate a little bit whenever Bella spoke about the hot seat activity, because it was one of the favorite things that our eighth graders enjoyed. And what happened was you got to come up and sit in the so-called hot seat and there were eight questions there and they were leveled from a cold question to a hot question. And the cold question was something like, would you rather swim in the coldest water or eat the spiciest pepper? So that was, that was a simple one. And obviously, the questions that they were given at the lower end of this, of the, you know, hot seat were fun. They were, they were fun, they were engaging, so, you know, the kids laughed a lot about those. And then some of the deeper questions, remember the deeper one? Cause you were in the hot seat. I'll let you talk to that.
Um, the question that I ended up doing was when you were having struggles with determination and pushing yourself. And I was talking about um during soccer practice when we have to do runs and it's sometimes hard to keep going, but you have your people there with you that just help you push through and keep going.
So again, there, there's just a wide variety of questions. And for this particular lesson, it was all about values. And the values that they were sharing in class was, you know, they valued that determination. So then that comes out in the storytelling that they're able to share. And I know there was, you know, questions about, are they being given specific values? And what would you girls say, were you given values or were you just talking about the values that you have?
Don't be bashful.
We were basically more talking about the values that we have and we recently just talking about ourselves more than just stuff that was given to us.
And, and the whole purpose of, of that particular lesson, so the second step does the same thing and talking about how we own, we all have our own set of values and that helps guide our decision-making. So if we value honesty, then we're going to really strive to be honest in the things that we do. The part that I really liked and the kids really enjoyed about sec, or the Character Strong lesson was it took it a step farther. So with the second step lessons, they, you, they were still talking about values and the importance of values. And the Character Strong lesson led them to also think about where those decision-making skills will get you later on in life and how it pertains to your future. So I think that was the, the impactful part that a lot of the students enjoyed was just knowing that, okay, so the whole purpose of understanding what our own personal values are and how that drives our decision-making is if we have a value right now and we use that to guide our decision-making, it's going to lead us down a certain path. And we just have to be mindful that whatever we do value now, whatever path we choose, like it, it's going to guide us to, to where we're going in the future. So it's just that, that critical thinking of making sure that if you want to get here, you have to align yourself so that you can get there, if that makes sense to everybody. Did anybody have questions about that, because I know that was a really controversial topic.
When your students are completed, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so then after um the lessons were taught, the teachers had an opportunity to weigh in on what their thoughts were on the curriculum. And um, again, I don't know if you can read that, I apologize that it is so small.
No, it's, we can, it's good.
Um, so, did this uh second step curriculum provide adequate differentiation for diverse student needs? Um, and again, that's what we were talking about also with the UDLs, can we make sure that we're reaching all students? And yes, for second step, it can do that. Um, but for Character Strong, it was unanimously one hundred percent said yes. And then I wanted to know, how easy was it to implement the curric, the different curriculums? And you can see, there's a little bit more difficulty implementing the second step curriculum than there was the Character Strong curriculum. And I wanted to know about um relevancy. So were the second step lessons relevant? Um, not relevant, too, very relevant. Again, so as you can see here, the second step one actually scored a little bit higher because it had, um, it didn't have the somewhat, which is that number three in the middle. And then how engaging were they? So the second step, because if our students aren't engaged, our students aren't going to really get the material. That's why we talk so much about relationships and getting them excited about what they're doing. Second step was somewhat exciting um or engaging. And however, Character Strong um unanimously was quite engaging for our students. And again, being cognizant of their time, how much time does it take to prepare? So for this one, it took no time at all. It took fifteen minutes or less for the teachers to prepare a second step lesson. However, for Character Strong, it did take a little bit more time for some folks, but there is a lot more to delve into. So if you want to make sure that you are truly differentiating your curriculum, which really isn't a possibility for a second step, you're able to do that and it's going to take a little bit more time. And, I have the same question. Yeah, so can students apply character strong um skills they've learned in real life situations? Yes, and it was the same thing for second step as well. And I don't know, um, you all have access to the um scope and sequence, but just wanted to put this out there so it was fresh, this is just kind of like a basic, simple model. Element, elementary level, they focus on three aspects, being kind and that includes kindness, empathy, respect and cooperation. Being strong, and that talks about courage, responsibility and perseverance. And being well, gratitude, honesty and creativity. So pretty basic skills and this breaks. So pretty basic skills and this breaks it down for you. But it really breaks it down each lesson in the scope and sequence. And for middle school, sixth grade focuses on belonging. How can we create a place where everyone feels like they belong? Seventh grade wellbeing, how do I develop personal wellbeing and how does it affect our relationships with others? And eighth grade engagement, how do we practice engaging meaningful, meaningfully in our lives, our relationships and in our schools? And all of those character straight, character traits below are targeted in each of those grade level bands. So values and purpose, emotion, understanding and regulation, empathy and compassion and goals and habits. So these are all the character traits that come with this program. And then in high school, it, it goes through, right now, our plan is to only use it with ninth grade, but there's so much goodness here that. You use it all the way down to the 12th grade with leadership. How can we work to build a better world through personal influence and effective teamwork? So much great greatness here within this rich curriculum. And the question that was asked to me um, during the co-curricular meeting was what does character strong offer that second step doesn't? So my list here is um, pretty robust. So second step. Has a lot of the same things that character strong does, but character strong also offers a tier two and a tier three curriculum. That is something that if we went with second step, that we would have to develop, which is what we do now. We go and we find our own tier two solutions to offer to our students. So with this, we have um. Essentially a prescribed set of supports for our students because it also comes with a built-in universal screener. That tells us exactly, you know, what additional supports that our students need. The kindness and kickoff activity enclosures that happen at the end, that's all, that's whole school and it's spelled out for you. There is a ton of campus resources and I just gave you a little snippet here of what's included, but in each of those buttons, there is a plethora of information. Second step does have some of those options, but it's very, very limited. And the behavior supports that you'll see down below that focus on your attendance, your behavioral responsibility and your bully prevention. There are family letters in second step, but there are family dared challenges in character strong, which really builds that engagement at home. And um, as many of you saw that I shared, because I'm very passionate about it. Is they offer a tremendous amount of professional development that's free, that's great. You don't have to have character strong um, as your curriculum to be able to access their resources. And they share out um, freely and very, very frequently. And again, it just, it aligns with everything that we believe in here at the district with our comprehensive plan, our trauma-informed approach. Our career standards that we have to teach, but doesn't say how we have to teach them. So this allows us to teach them appropriately in a way that we know that teachers are going to teach them. And it also leads us to our mission and our vision. And I know Ms. Ole alluded, um, or she shared with you that she did teach both lessons. Um, and is very also passionate about this program. So I don't know if there's anything else that you would like to add.
I mean, I think for me, not only just being a teacher, but also being a parent and, you know, knowing the struggles that. A lot of our students face and even struggles that parents face, it's really beneficial to have a curriculum that involves parents. With the teachers and gets everybody using the same vocabulary, the same language. And when that consistency is there across your tiers, that is a huge benefit. Because now you have something in tier one that is also in tier two and tier three. So there's, there's not a gap and there's not. A disconnect between everything that you're trying to do. And I think that that ends up being one of the most beneficial things.
Okay.
I'll have questions after a bit.
Okay, alright. Um, alright, well, thank you very much. Alright. And I'm sure we'll be discussing this here a little bit later on, so. Thank you ladies.
It's not a critical, but it looks like we have a ways to go.
Yeah, it's pretty critical.
So you guys wanna?
Give me five minutes.
Alright, take a five-minute recess.
Seven forty-five.
Okay. Okay, we are now back um, from our recess. Everything has been taken care of, that needs to be taken care of, I hope. Um, okay, so with uh, those presentations being out of the way, uh, we're gonna move on.
Well, we didn't discuss.
We're gonna do that during the curriculum portion of it.
Thank you, I misunderstood.
Alright, thank you. Okay, uh, next up superintendent's report.
I'm gonna keep mine pretty short. Uh, I was gonna talk a little bit about CTC members. Uh, but because we have a lot of things left on the agenda, I will send that to you all in uh, this week's memo. Uh, but just as kind of a general overview, we're seeing some really pretty amazing increases in our CTC program. Uh, and I'm really proud and happy with all the work that Kurt and his team has done to attract more students, offer more programs. And show the successful implementation of all these programs. Uh, we saw quite a few of those successes last year, but there's, there's much more that I can, that I'll send to you on Friday. Uh, another thing that you'll see on the Friday memo, and I sent it last week as well, is I would like to start. Uh, meeting with individual board members in their constituency community, so the region one, region two, so forth. So what I, what I'm proposing is that you, each individually and I meet in someplace that's in your community and we invite the community to come in and just have. Uh, an open conversation with you as their representative board member and me about anything to do with the school. So uh, in last week's memo, I'll attention, uh, uh, attach it. And this week's memo as well is a chart that has some. Uh, proposed dates, doesn't have to be those dates, but if they work for you, just pick a time and a place on one of those dates. And then Christine and I will work on getting that set up with uh, whatever place you choose.
Yes, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Um, something to think about, I know our local borough council members would love. Well, I shouldn't say love, incorrect, scratch. Well, just please think about this and let me know that if we met at a borough council meeting and then at the township, I might have two in the township. And I think they would really enjoy that.
That's a good idea.
Okay, so think about that and let us, you know, us, okay?
A lot of them though are on the nights that we meet and stuff.
Well, they also.
They have to do special.
So Elizabeth, why, why don't we start referring, why don't we do this? If, if you would prefer that be the time and place we meet, just put that on the.
I'll talk to them, is that alright? And then, great.
Sounds good.
Cause they'll enjoy that.
Uh, and then the last thing is just a quick note, uh, on Sunday, Monday and Tuesday, Bill and Roger and I will be at the PSBA, PASA conference. Uh, and so I'm sure we'll be taking good notes and, and bring back uh, some of the things we learned uh, when we see you all next. And that's all I have for the moment.
Okay, uh, next up committee reports, uh, curricular co-curricular. Polly?
Yeah, um, so we met on the seventeenth, we discussed the new K to twelve silence, science curriculum. Um, that Megan and her team put together, I think they did a great job with that. Um, we also discussed the character strong versus second step, uh, which we talked a lot about tonight. Um. So, I think we're gonna have more discussion on that. What I will say to that is um. That at the last meeting, I guess I felt kind of rushed to vote on it and that's, and I didn't have time to do my own research. Um, but after talking to some people in the district from principals, guidance counselors, teachers. Um, all of them have noted that character strong has much more to offer. And um, they also stated the, the severe need for the SEL curriculum. Um, I understand the price is significantly higher. Um, but somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that the PCCD money that we're using to purchase it has to be used on uh, specific things. And it's not money that we can save or use in other places. Um, so if I'm wrong on that, let me know. And I'm pretty sure that it's, it comes from the state and if we don't spend it, we. Potentially won't get as much next year from it. So again, if I'm wrong, please correct me on that.
Oh, you're, you're right on Polly with that.
Okay, um, so I know we talk about, you know, the, yeah, it is taxpayer money, but that's, it's state taxpayer money. And if we don't spend it, we just don't get it in, in our community. So it's, it's money that we pay into the state no matter what. At least this way, it's coming back into our community. Um, and if we don't use it, we potentially may not get as much next year. And then we wrapped up our meeting discussing the ripple effect, which is the SEL curriculum that they're using um, for in-school suspension. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, facilities committee.
Okay, facilities committee met on the twenty-fourth last month and most of what we discussed was, was items. Uh, that Mr. Hoy brought to us about different things throughout the facilities and throughout the district. Uh, the first item we were going to talk about, but we had to kind of uh, shelf till next month is, uh, we were gonna have. Alyssa Wingfield, who was supposed to give us a presentation on how the solar um, might impact uh, the new Liberty Curtain facility. But she didn't have the drawings and whatever she needed to do that. So I think we've postponed that till next month. As also, I think we're gonna have Jeff Strobe from Crabtree uh, with us at that time. Also to give us a, an update since we haven't talked with him about, you know, where things are with the Liberty Curtain project. Uh, which is moving along nicely, I might add. Uh, the other things we talked about and I'll, I'll go through this quickly because I know we have a lot of stuff to get to. Uh, Rob Elementary, there's some trees outside on Washington Street, I believe, that are um, coming, the roots are coming up through the. Through the sidewalk and so on, and they're gonna need to be replaced. Uh, there are also some other trees. Out in the playground area, I think there were uh, seven altogether that, and, and some stumps that from, from other old trees that have been cut down in the past. That will need to be taken care of. Um, the total for that, according to Sam was about forty-two hundred dollars. We are gonna um, replate, replant the trees with something that is probably a little more. Little better with as far as a root system and so on. And I think uh. Elizabeth brought it up and I thought it was a really good idea about the uh, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of Clinton County. I guess the Clinton County, that committee. Is looking to plant, I believe, two-hundred-and-fifty trees. And, well, that's the idea anyway. And so we might be able to tap into that. Uh, the next thing we talked about was the, we, there's a lot of traffic congestion and a lot of buildings, as you heard last month because of the uh, the busing situation. And there is uh, a problem with the traffic flow at Woodward Elementary. And it's, there's a lot of parent traffic and so on. So in order to relieve that situation, uh, we're gonna be able to. We have forgotten permission from Woodward Township to be able to uh, open up part of the fence there, take out a couple of parking places that. Are not really gonna be missed because there's plenty of parking there for the staff and so on. And we'll be able to loop that, all that traffic around, which will make that traffic flow a lot better. And that. That project is gonna be happening here fairly soon. Uh, Renova Elementary Emergency Generator and Switch Gear, uh, they, there is a new one in place, but there's not. The one that's there right now is functioning okay. The only thing, it doesn't have the, the capacity to support the walk-in freezer and at the elementary school. But if that's ever needed, there is, because of all of the new uh, new facility over at, at the high school, that can be transferred over there. So there's, uh, that's something that is really not a high priority at this time. The, there's, we're gonna be installing a new water line this month. Uh, we're gonna be working with the Renova Water Authority uh, to install a two-inch um, yard. Water line to the baseball football field, which uh, is gonna be, the water will be drinkable, potable. And which will be a good addition for the, for the coaches and so on, for keeping the kids hydrated. So it's. Um, that whole project should cost about fifteen hundred dollars and it should be happening here sometime in the next couple of weeks. And just a couple of information, the, the Buck's, Bucktail Stormwater piping repair. Uh, that's uh, being discussed and investigated on how we best, best want to do that, working with the EP and. The county conservation service, or district rather, and also the high school, the Central Mountain High School water heater. The parts are um, hopefully here by now, they were to be shipped at the end of last month, so they will be here. Uh, but it's, everything's still functioning fine, they're, they're able to, there's no problem, they just need, that just needs to be replaced whenever, so. Um, that was pretty much it.
Well, I hope they're here, because if they're not, they're stuck in.
Yeah, plenty of hot water, Roger.
Huh?
They, they've got a hot water, so they just need to replace the water here.
Okay. Alright, so let's continue on with uh, the finance committee, Jeff?
Well, the finance committee um, met um, on the twenty-ninth of last month and. We had, only had two items on the agenda. We have, first of all, was, first one was an information uh, item. That you will see in tonight's agenda, it's the, just an overview of the audit. From, that Baker Tilly's does annually of the entire, all of entire school district finances. And it, it's a handout that's in there is one that was uh, shared with, with the finance committee at that night. The main issue that we talked about that, at that meeting was um, the um, impact of the tax. Commission or collection committee, the TCC has its, you know, and I, uh, Mr. Grime, Nick Grimes gave us a presentation. He put together a timeline of how all of this came together. And basically what it comes down to is. Whatever we do, whatever happens with the tax office is basically controlled. What direction we go with is controlled really by what the TCC decides to do with how they're going to. Collect the earned income tax, which right now is being. Collected by our tax office along with the business privilege tax. And um, the local service tax and the real estate tax, all of those are being collected. If the TCC decides to use another agency to collect the EIT. Those, that, that means that then the district has to decide what they want to do with the tax office. And I, I would just. To where it says, we, there's a, a lot of different options that can be, that can be um, selected. And, but that is all being driven by what the TCC decides to do. Whether we continue, whether they continue to use the tax office, whether they outsource the EIT to the. To another outside agency, um, that is up to them, but until they make a decision. That will, once that happens, then it would still, we, we would have an impact on us and. Yeah, we could then have to research, you know, cert, software, increase, security, auditing, physical space, all those things. If we decide to continue the tax office and so on. But um, those are all things that are still kind of up in the air right now. And we can't really do anything until a decision is made by them. So, that's it.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Um, yes, thank you, Jeff. I'm not gonna go into the tax issue, this isn't right time for that. Um, but I just wanted a clarification, during the finance committee meeting. He, the tax officer, Nick Grimes, put up a timeline. Nick Grimes put up a timeline. And July twenty-fourth, it states that the school board and the TCC have the potential of appointing. A new collector and the timeline for such. And. Tracy was kind enough to look in our emails. I believe it was July twenty-fifth. That we there was an email notifying us all. Well. What wasn't in that email was that a fully developed third-party contract.
There was no contract.
Excuse me, please let me finish, Jeff. It just said, the July twenty-fifth email was just notifying that it was coming up as a discussion item. Well. Just so everyone's clear. Keystone Central School Board members were not aware of that third-party contract. That just appeared at the August third. Clinton County Tax Committee Meeting, nor did the delegates. No, it just appeared and the delegates were not asked whether or not it should be developed. And the Keystone Central School District employees were not asked if it should be developed. So I just wanna make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on.
I got one question for Jeff.
Yes.
The employees that are over there. Do they belong to, are they paid and do they belong but to the TCC? Or are they Keystone Central?
They are they're Keystone Central employees. And they also are part of the Secretary's Bargaining Unit. However, they are not paid with general fund dollars. They are paid for the the tax, the. The revenue that comes in, the fees come in that come in from the municipal municipalities. That's a fun fun one. But they are not paid with Keystone Central.
Right.
Dollars. They are, but they are, it's a very convoluted situation because. And it's been that way for years. I mean, the tax office, think of the tax office as. As a separate contractor, because it's just like the outsource. You know, we are, the tax office is the contractor. It just so happens that there it's located in a Keystone Central. Facility. And. They are Keystone Central employees. They're paid through our by our payroll, but that's it. It's not that they're being paid for with. General fund money.
So they work at both Keystone Central and the tax office, or do they stay at the tax office?
They are they are in the tax office. That's their.
That's their.
Yeah, it's just that they're in this building and it's not like it's not. They could be in a totally separate building, but it's just it's just that they're housed here.
I got asked about it. That's why I guess I wasn't at the meeting, but there were some questions raised and. I got asked about it, so I figured I'd just ask.
Yeah, there's more to learn.
Okay, okay. All right, let's move on. Personnel Committee.
Uh, Personnel Committee met. Two things you'll see on the agenda tonight is the job description for the school psychology assistant. And an MOU. With the ACCE, we have opportunity for a grant that will pay for a CTC guidance counselor for two school years.
That's great. May I ask?
All right, Elizabeth.
So who initiated the grant and is it something that we're did in-house or?
Uh, yeah, so Kurt and initiated the grant and sought out the grant monies to fund the position.
Great, thank you, Kurt, again and again and again.
Kurt, you do an awful lot, man.
Yeah, how many millions have you brought to us? Well, it would be nice to know at the end of this fiscal year because it's a chunk of change.
Okay, let's move on. Policy Committee.
Uh, you'll see when we get down there to it, what we discussed, we had a pretty positive meeting, I feel. Things are getting better. Uh, we slowed down how many things were going over at one shot so we can truly go over them. And that's really it.
Okay, good. All right. Next thing, we have the Treasures Report. Any questions, comments on that?
Well, when when the business office is here next week, we can ask some questions, okay?
Yeah, the business, I see they're not here tonight.
So if you have questions about anything from the business, they weren't here for a variety of reasons. Uh, if you have any questions, if you can send them to myself and to Joni, then we can get those questions for answered for you. Uh, if you ask them next weekend, it's the first time they hear them, they may not be able to answer right in the meeting.
Okay, cuz there's a couple of things I wanna ask, but I'll wait till we get down to business cuz I just got some thoughts.
Okay, was this about the treasures, financials or report?
No, it is, but it isn't.
All right, okay, financial reports, any questions, comments?
Next week.
Okay, I can ask if you have questions to please send those ahead of time and don't ask them, only ask them then. I don't wanna say you can't ask the questions. I think the questions are important, but give us a chance to get you the answers.
No, I appreciate that. Some of the questions I have, though, are just more for informational reasons. By the time I sit there and type it and then I go back and open my computer and I go back to read the response. And then if it's unclear, then I have to type like something else. So if it was a real critical question, I understand what you're saying. But it's very time-consuming, just. I like having the option, but in this case, it's just easier just to express it. Boom, done. Okay, but thank you.
Yep, I just can't promise we'll have the answer.
That's fine, but that's fine.
Okay.
Roger, since you're on the financial report, just let me ask him something real.
Sure.
Good.
Could they do a report and email it to us as board members? That it'd be a simple list of how many ongoing lawsuits we're doing.
Yeah.
That we're involved in. And could they be like, you don't have to talk names or anything like that. But how many special ed lawsuits, disability lawsuits, tax office lawsuits, stuff like that? Can we get a report so we know what's going on and where we stand?
Yep, easy.
And.
A short list, but yeah.
And then the same, I was gonna ask the same thing with the list of the cyber and charter schools. How many we have ongoing? Cuz when you look in through the bills for payment, I mean, they're all over the place. So I'd like to know how many different ones we're using and how much we're paying them.
So last I have the the information from last year for the cyber charters, it's just under two million and eleven different schools. I'm not sure if that's the same this year.
I wondered if you could just once a month send a list out of this is what this one's getting announced. And. The same thing with tuition, so we know how much tuitions are going out, how much is getting paid back. Just so we can have a broad overview to look at.
For staff tuition, what tuition?
Yeah, because if you go down through bills for payment, there's probably twenty different lines of tuitions. They're all over the place. If we could just centralize them and get a list of.
For staff or like the cyber having to pay tuitions for the cyber?
Both.
Okay.
And that that was really it.
Well, that's a good idea.
Okay. Moving on, enrollment reports, any questions on that? Elizabeth, you'll notice that the charter school is actually there because now they got the men or the information.
Yes.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Good deal.
It'll be interesting to see a five-year report maybe next year.
Okay, so, um, next. Uh, Board for informational stuff, it's, uh, the CTC Occupational Advisory Committee members. Anybody have any questions on that stuff?
Yes, actually I do. For years, I've always been really curious and it's, I'm not intruding, Kurt. But if you ever have any of those meetings and board members can just go to here. Um, I've always enjoyed, I would I would enjoy that, but if it's if it's gonna be a distraction or something, don't feel obligated. But. I I know a lot of these folks and I love this program, so just, if it ever works, thank you.
Well, all the names of businesses that are on there and the individuals, that tells me that that man is really stomping his feet.
Oh, I know.
And kudos to you, Kurt.
Yeah, it's one of our.
It's all the staff, but that takes a lot of work. I know I know a little bit about that. Yeah. Yep, all the staff that are involved in that.
Okay, let's move on. Paul, okay, next for policies. Uh, first read, policy zero zero six meetings, any questions?
I'm I'm sorry, I'm really tired, Chair Chris. Did we, did we go over this and check those boxes?
Yes.
Okay, cuz there was one box that was missing.
Yes, we have it all taking care of Christine and I talked, Dr. Redman and I talked and everything is.
Okay, next.
I I do have a question about that. Under agenda preparation. It's it's the superintendent cooperation with the Board Secretary, Board President, Committee Chair. Just point of clarification on that. What are we talking about? The the actual board meeting agendas? And. What what does committee chair mean?
What what we discussed in the meeting was like Dr. Redman and the President, Vice President. They set up the agenda for the board meeting. They're the ones that build it. And Dr. Redman will get with us that are chairman on the other committees. So that we can go ahead a couple of days ahead of a meeting and set an agenda to make things streamlined a little bit.
Okay, I I was just wasn't clear on what committee chairman, okay.
Do you like it, Jeff? That you're.
I I just didn't know that we were, if we were gonna, the the committee chairs were gonna sit down and and actually. Create the agenda with the President and the and the Superintendent or.
It's not with the President, it's just between the committee chair and Dr. Redman.
So it's differentiated between board meetings, which is the the chair and committee meetings, which is the committee chair.
Right, right, I that I understand that. I just, I didn't know how the committee chair was gonna fit into that whole process.
Similar to how, very similar to how it's doing now, it's just pointing it out in policy.
Okay, fine, that's that's good. Just just that ask.
Okay, next, uh, policy three twenty-two gifts.
I have a question.
Yes.
So when we open that up, it talks about, it talks about that you cannot receive. Gifts of significant value. And you touch the number one. It brings up section five-ten, which talks about safety patrols. How is safety patrols?
That was a screw-up on PSBA's partner trying to correct it. That was on.
Okay.
We had that.
Patrol doesn't go with.
We had that. Every revision that PSBA sent us, that same thing popped up. And we checked on that right in during the meeting. I think Christine checked it out, Christina. And and that's what we found out. That's a screw-up on PSBA's.
It might actually deal with the PT belts that they're supposed to be wearing, you know, trying to gift them out, so. You know what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I am, I'm so happy. People are reading these and they're actually clicking on the links. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
What?
It was a test. It was a test. Kidding, kidding, kidding.
What, how do we define significant value?
Five dollars, I think it was. I think it's five dollars, but it will be corrected before she posts.
Was probably the minimus value, so it's typically either less than ten or less than five dollars.
Well, that's what I assume, but, okay.
Yeah, nineteen forty-nine, it would buy a half car.
What we removed out of there, if you look at it, was there was a line. That stated the superintendent or a designee may approve acts of generosity to individual district employees. But then report it to the board. We took that out so that nobody could say that, well. The superintendent said I could have this gift, but not this person that took that wipes that out.
Yeah.
There's no favorability that way.
Yeah, or accusations.
Very good. All right, policy three thirty-one, job-related expenses. Questions?
I'll I'll say it afterwards.
Okay, um, this, I mean, granted, there is. Legislation in here and it specifies, you know, what shall and may. But I I am concerned, um, and I I didn't really say this during the policy committee because I wanted to get feedback from the whole board. The use of mileage reimbursements is just because of price of gas, et cetera. Does if you looked at the how much we spend annually in just travel reimbursements. And I'm not talking about travel reimbursements to go to a conference or they have to get to. Um, an athletic. Um, something that's out in two counties away. I'm talking about just day-to-day, going here, going there, going here from this school to that school. And. Is that an expense that this school board feels? Then. We should be paying.
Well, the policy reads.
Actually, I'd like to point out that that actually doesn't really deal with this policy. Right. Okay, that that's something totally separate and that should be brought to the Policy Committee.
Okay, well, I just wanted to get some feedback before we go even go there.
Well, we take it to the Policy Committee, bring it to the committee and then. Maybe we'll bring it.
That's a total different deal than what this is.
Okay, I just, okay, I hear what you're saying, but all right, we'll go.
All right, so any other questions? No? Okay, let's move on. Policy two twenty-seven, control substance paraphernalia. Questions? No, no, all right, good. Uh, policy two thirty-four, pregnant, parenting and married students. Any questions?
No.
Okay, uh, let's move on to the minutes. Uh, September fifth, twenty twenty-four work session minutes, they were all sent out. Any questions, concerns?
No.
What about the voting meeting? Questions, concerns?
No.
Policy Committee?
Christina's doing a great job.
Uh, curricular, co-curricular. Uh, facility?
Oh, I do.
Elizabeth?
Thank you. It's just a more of a clarification. Thank you. It's just for clarification, I just wanted to give a little background first. And however it should be edited without. Beating this up, um, on under C two. It doesn't really discuss what I was trying, doesn't read the what I was actually articulating. Basically, what I was saying was, no, we should not, I was not saying we should just go ahead and replace roofs that aren't outdated yet. Um, what I was saying was that maybe with simple math. Take the cost of the roof to replace it. Put the solar panels on sooner than later. And that might actually save the district money, and this is the rationale.
Okay, Elizabeth, question for you.
Sure.
Okay, um, now, I understand that you want to put this out and everything like that. These meet, these, uh, minutes were sent to us via email.
Right.
Okay, um, and we asked for any changes to be made at that time.
Yes.
Okay. Did you send any of this in to get changed?
No, and the reason.
And, okay, so. All right, we had the process in place, that way we can actually do that. We don't have to be here till twelve o'clock tonight, okay?
Yes, but it's very important. If I would have just changed the minutes without everyone understanding. The concept that McClure, this is the critical part, the McClure engineer was the one that said your roof will last longer. With solar panels on top. So what I was trying to articulate in the meeting meeting is that possibly the district would actually save money. If those roofs were replaced sooner, get the panels on top, the roof will last longer. It'll be replaced prior to waiting fifteen years when it's gonna be more expensive and we won't be getting that solar power. So what I'm, I don't wanna beat this up, but if there were. And we won't be getting that solar power. So, what I'm, I don't wanna beat this up, but if a word solar on the roof. Can somehow be placed in there, or if you want me to type something up.
Please.
Okay.
Please edit it, that way we have it and would be good. I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, let's move on. Business, bills for payment, questions?
Um, we didn't discuss.
Oh darn, okay. Finance committee? Go ahead.
Um, yes, and again, I didn't wanna just type this because I need to express it publicly first, okay? But I'm more than happy to edit, type, send it back in. Um, under, on the finance committee, meeting minutes, under section D. The audit planning communication, um, we discussed this during that meeting, that. And I'll speak just for myself, I won't speak for the other members there. Um, the chair of that committee. Independently, outside of the committee, met with the business manager. To talk to Baker Tilly, who's our school board auditor, without notifying us and asking us if we would have also liked to have gone. And I requested at that time that that type of independent behavior outside of the school board not happen again, please.
Okay.
That is the way that it has always been handled.
Everywhere that I've been.
And everywhere that it is.
That's fine, I don't care, that's fine, I appreciate history, but what I'm saying is during the meeting. I didn't hear any of the other committee members wanting to do it that way. So what I'm saying, it's educational for all of us, and what's, what's the problem if all the board members get to actually hear? From the professional auditor, and what's wrong with that?
We will, we will actually hear from the professional auditor once they actually do give our.
Okay, but the point is, the point is having a chair work outside of the committee. Doesn't help with transparency and allowing the other board members on the committee the same opportunity. There's, there's no hierarchy here, we're all equal.
Actually, there's a reason why somebody's called the chair.
What I'm saying is, these are committee meetings of the whole.
All right.
And I also want, I will write this edit in there. Um, under information number two, the tax office discussion. Um, I'm gonna request that the word, um, appropriate. The second line be scratched out, because I didn't feel it was appropriate information, it was a basic overview of information. And I'm also gonna request that, um, the software audit discussion. Uh, be placed in there, so I will fix that and I'll have it ready for you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, next, bills for payment.
I have a, just a question for Dr. Redman. I noticed that we have a lot of entries for milages for different people going different places. To cut down on some of that being spent. Do we have some of our leased fleet vehicles that people could drive? Instead of having to pay somebody extra mileage?
We don't have anything in terms of a, of leased, um, uh, personal vehicles.
Okay.
They're all, they're all kind of vans and that sort of thing. We don't have any just sedans or anything like that that we could use for people moving. Uh, so we have itinerary staff that moves from one building to another, they're part-time in one building, part-time in another. We don't have any cars that we could. Use for just that kind of shut link.
Okay.
I have a question for you on that, then. Liability with that. If they wreck in their vehicle. Who's covering it? Is it their insurance or is it our insurance?
Uh, we've gone through all of the, I can't speak to directly to the individual kind of things, but. Uh, if they're driving for work purposes and they're covered by the school's liability insurance. Now, the insurances work together with theirs, so some of the medical coverage comes from personal insurance. So it's a little bit more nuanced than just saying it's, it's all in the school, it's all in theirs.
Well, this, are you, I'm sorry.
No.
Thank you. Um, well, this sort of dovetails with what I was trying to get, but I know, we're gonna talk about it in policy committee, but. This sort of dovetails, if we look at the last five years, minus COVID, you gotta scratch COVID, uh, um. How much money we're spending for mileage reimbursement every year, and then break that down. Is it just going from school to school to school to school, or the, and then, or the other ones are conferences, and that's different, okay? But we don't have a breakdown of where this mileage is going. And if we find out after looking at it, you know, and evaluating it. Maybe, maybe it might be more cost effective to have one or two vehicles leased per school. I don't know.
Yeah, um, I, I would say that's not very feasible because where one person is going back and forth and where another person is going back and forth, there's gonna be two completely different buildings. We can't, I, I don't think it would be feasible to buy enough personal shuttle vehicles, because then we'd have to have.
I mean, lease, but at least, yeah.
We'd have to have dozens of.
Okay.
No, but I'm looking at it like, if you took your truck versus I took my truck, your truck's sixty thousand, mine's thirty thousand.
Well, mine's more than sixty thousand.
But yeah, I know, I, I'm being a smart aleck.
Well, so what, yeah, it'd be nice to see.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Lost the school sixty thousand there and thirty thousand there, and you can have a twenty-five thousand dollar. Runaround vehicle instead of.
Sure, and I can understand that, that, um, kind of what if scenario, but when it comes down to the dollars and cents of actual expenditure, we don't, our, our folks don't get into wrecks. And, and so at the end of the day, we spend far less on, on mileage replacement than we would if we were to have to lease a fleet of vehicles for this interbuilding.
You didn't say, I think you just said, did you? You just say our people don't get into wrecks.
I, uh, so I'm not suggesting never.
I wouldn't.
Better knock on wood.
Never say that, winter's coming, and I see wrecks every day.
Yep, uh, but I, I'm, I can say with a significant amount of certainty that, that the cost of us paying for mileage is a lot less. Than if we were to lease a fleet of vehicles to have people move around in school vehicles.
Okay, next, um, audit planning communication.
Hold on, there's a lot of things under bills for payment that I wanted to ask. Which I could have asked and expect an answer at the next meeting. I think that there's a lot of things that there's questions on. Uh, and I think that we should be transparent about it and answer them. So if we email it in, how are we being transparent?
You can, we can still bring up the questions the next meeting, say, hey, we had these questions and these are the answers that we got.
Okay, then I'll, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Cause there's, there's not a lot, believe it or not, but there's a couple that are really sticking out there, I'd like.
Yeah, absolutely, if you send the questions in, then you can, when, uh, that, this part comes up in the voting meeting and say, hey, I sent this email about these questions. These are the answers that I got, just so you can make sure that those issues are addressed.
Is this just a fluke at the business offices in here, or is this something that's gonna go?
This is just a, just, okay, things worked out tonight.
All right. Okay, anything else? Okay, um, moving on, twenty-three, twenty-four, audit planning communication, any questions?
Um, I do.
Elizabeth?
Um, if we would have been able to meet with the auditor, um, I would have presented this question at the time to get some feedback. Um, to the best of my ability, I don't know if any of these snapshot audits, well, I know which we have to have, and we should. Um, we could have asked Baker Tilly, when we've had our last software audit, I mean, a real software audit. By a third party, which would be Baker Tilly. So my question is, does this? What we're seeing here now, does that include a software, a, a full software audit of our school systems? Because the meetings I've been going to outside of this, our board meetings. It keeps being alluded to that we have security issues with our software in the public meetings. So I've been asking for Baker Tilly to come, just give a free presentation on stock audits, one, two and three. And also to get their thoughts before we go into another audit on software audits. For our whole system, and by a third party. So I'm putting it out there, and this is why. It's imperative that all the board members have equal access to our consultants, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, next, IDA grant six one one, questions?
That's for the IEP stuff, right?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
We. I don't know what the, the rules are on handing out IEPs, but if you look at this list. You realize that of all these schools that you guys have posted there that were second highest with IEPs?
We're also the second highest, uh, population wise of all the IU, so it's appropriate that we have to have second highest.
Okay, all right, could I, I found that really odd.
Chris, you'd actually be surprised what all goes in.
Well, I'm sure of that, I'm sure.
I'm, I know, cause I've seen this, the process and stuff like that, and it is in-depth, very in-depth.
I'm sure, I just, this whole list kinda like had me shaking my head.
So, all right, let's move on, uh, library weeding report, any questions on that?
Yeah, what happens to those books? Do, do they get donated to different libraries or stuff, or?
That's part of our, our process as we offer them, uh, to other libraries that might want them, other schools that might.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep.
I was hoping we just didn't take a truck over the dump and dump it.
We stopped, that was stopped, that was stopped.
All right, uh, let's see here, moving on, the, uh, Pennsylvania Highlands Community College. Questions? Okay, lack of want a college proposal, any questions on that? Okay, PSU Cooperative Pre-Service Field Student Agreement, any questions on that?
Well, it's great, 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 great. Who, who's putting all these together, Dr. Redman?
That's kind of our, our whole team.
That's great, well, thank you, whole team, whoever you are.
Okay, next, personnel, any questions on that? Questions, comments?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Uh, where are we staff-wise a year from a year ago? Are we? How many staff did we have a year ago? How many do we have now?
I can't answer that off the top of my question, uh, top of my head, but we can get that answer to you.
Okay, on page three, there's a, a line there, Dawn Peters, two hundred and fifty dollar. Is that a one-time thing for being a mentor, or?
Yes.
There is, okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to ask. And then, uh, farther down on page three. We have Francis Redman the fourth being hired. I would say that's a strong case of nepotism, because you're his dad. How, how, this is a friends and family thing. I don't think that's a good practice.
Is he related?
Yes, he's my son.
Oh.
And I have nothing to do with the hiring or the supervision, I don't even see him.
Yeah, but you do oversee the whole deal, I don't think that's a good idea.
Um, Ken, okay, Tracy, can you please address this, please?
We sit here week after week discussing the struggle we have finding people.
Hmm.
And keeping people. I mean, on here, there was one person that started and we hired her one day, and two days later. She was gone. Why are we, we live in a very small community with very limited. Employment opportunities right now, or limited people wanting to work in this community. We have somebody who is willing and able to come in here, and you wanna automatically just say no, just because it's his son?
No, I didn't say no. I asked a question because. Nepotism is a practice among those with power or influence. That could be favoring relatives, friends or associates, especially by giving them jobs. I'm saying, is it a good practice to be hiring the son of the superintendent? Because that, that, that can scream.
No, if he is qualified, vetted by independent people, I mean, everybody works here, the people that. Looked at his credentials, looked at his background check. We have the vacancy, we, we have the need. It's not the first time that any relative of any administrator has been hired in this district.
That's right, and a lot of times this causes problems.
What kind of problem?
There's been, there's been no wrongdoing.
Okay.
That has ever been proved. If he does something wrong and then it's covered up or something, then yes, that is an issue. If he's given any favoritism, but we can't exclude people from employment opportunities in this district just because they're related to somebody.
I can ask the question.
You absolutely.
Whether you like it or not, I asked it.
I'm just saying.
Mr. Schaff, I, I think I can also clarify that the process. The interview process was, was conducted fairly, the same as we would with anyone else, and if you would remove, um. Francis Redman the fourth off of here, we would have a vacant position because the, it's, he's fulfilling a position, it's a building assistant. A para educator position, so, um, there was no favoritism, and it's not like we have a pool of candidates that. Were.
I'm not saying you, you're doing a bad job interviewing, I'm not saying it couldn't fit the bill. All I'm saying is how it appears. That's it.
Gotcha, just wanted, just wanted to clarify the, the position and, and the process.
There's always gonna be a question when that comes up, and it is what it is, but we need people and there's absolutely no reason. That he shouldn't be.
Okay, Elizabeth?
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. I totally get Tracy your point, we have an extremely small pool, okay? Chris, I do get it, okay, but as soon as the public sees that this is the superintendent's son or relative. The automatic reaction is never positive, so I think hearing this.
That's why it's better to get it out.
In the open, absolutely. Now, I remember Dr. Martin, her daughter, I believe, wanted to be a teacher here, we. It just, it wasn't a good fit at the time, and luckily she, you know, went somewhere else, but this is a building assistant. I think we've let everyone know that. Um, you know, because of that, I mean, I wouldn't stop this, I would never try to stop this, but I just feel that we're, we're, we've acknowledged it.
Okay, it's out there.
Exactly, that's what.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on then. Okay, job description, school psychologist assistant, any questions? None? Okay, let's move on, okay, this is gonna be the one that takes forever. Okay. Character strong, moving to the curricular co-curricular, character strong, K through twelve SEL curriculum. Questions, comments, concerns?
I got a couple of different questions.
Go ahead.
Uh, where's Mike? There you are. In your, uh, thing you did up there, you said. Ninety-seven percent approve of this, right?
Evan, is this on?
Yeah, it is now.
Um, ninety-seven percent, um, of our teachers say that we need to have an SEL curriculum.
Okay, but up there, how many teachers do we have?
Couple, more than two hundred. And you have sixty-six, uh, that.
You had sixty-six responses, so ninety-seven percent is not a true number.
Of those sixty-six that responded, I can't make people do surveys, I can put them out there.
I totally understand that, and.
From a, if I could, from a statistics standpoint, that level of sampling would be appropriate for being representative of the whole.
Well. We are sitting here as a board, we're not getting paid, we're volunteering for this.
Yeah.
Okay?
Crazy.
What, why are we even doing this? We made a decision in the July meeting to not do this program. And you wrote a letter out on September sixth, telling people that even though we're not currently using it. Here's a bunch of links we can do. Why, if we vote not to do it, are we still doing it? What, why are we sitting here making decisions if we're gonna be ignored?
Curriculum, we did not.
Chris, it was actually, yeah, whenever we did this, okay, it was voted, send, we voted it down. Because it did not go through the proper channels, okay? That was one of the big reasons for it, okay? Whenever it went back to committee, it was pushed through and discussed about how. There is actually only two options for this type of stuff, uh, one being character strong and the other being, uh, second step. So, and the deal with, uh, second step is that it is a K. Well, it is now a K through twelve, but previously it was only a K through eight, okay? Whereas the, uh, character strong is something that. Whereas the, uh, character strong is something that is, and has always been, a K through twelve. Um, and it has more, uh, tier, more resources for, uh, the tier support than what the, um, second step thing, I can't remember that for nothing.
I gave a very.
Yeah, I know.
I gave a very strong discussion on the lawsuits involved in this. I did my homework, and the character strong stuff has been passed out in our own policies, it says, except when a board has made a decision, it's time to move forward collectively and constructively. If we have an administrator or a teacher or whatever, just says, well, they voted it down, but we're gonna go do this anyway, why are we sitting here?
It wasn't.
It wasn't voted down, it was sent back to curriculum.
No, it was voted down. We said we do not want it. And part of that question over the lawsuits, and I asked Christine directly, a lot of the lawsuits are, do we have the ability to opt out? And Christine answered, no, they do not, the parents, if they don't want their kids to do it.
So, so first of all, I, I'm sorry for, for butting in, uh, Chris, so the decision from the board, it was a, it was a split vote, and, and at the same time, the.
It wasn't a split vote.
And, uh, I'm sorry, you're right, it wasn't a split vote, but at the, the time, I, I'm sorry for misspeaking, I was thinking of another issue, you're right, it, it wasn't a split vote. But it was very, also very clear from the board that we're gonna go back and send it back to the committee and have it go through the.
I don't remember that at all.
It's, it's, it's in the minutes and it's in the recording, we looked back at it, we made sure that, that what the board wanted us to do was to have it go through the full commit, uh.
I don't remember that discussion at all.
Yeah, so that.
I'm just curious, is we voted it down? We, here we are again. Yes, the bottom line is, if a parent wants to opt out of this, do they have the ability?
They will have the ability, yes.
Now they do, before they didn't.
No, I said currently, we didn't opt out of our second step program, I said that that's not something that we do currently, but that's something that we can certainly look into going forward.
And there is board policy that allows a parent to opt out of any, anything across any curriculum, it's not just SEL, but any curriculum that, that parent objects to, they can opt their student out, that's, that's part of the board policy.
With the ratings that this school has, I think the kids should be learning the, their math, reading, arithmetic, everything else, not sitting in a class learning something else.
So, I think.
I'm gonna get social, emotional learning from the get-go, I'll tell you that.
I, I hear you, a, and, and that has been expressed before, one of the things that we've spent a lot of time looking at the research around is that students can't get to the point of being able to learn reading and writing and arithmetic until they're self-regulated. And so those self-regulation skills that, when we were going to school, it was kind of an expectation, uh, isn't what we're seeing from our students, and we may want our students to come with those self-regulation skills, so that ability to work with each other and be able to learn, uh, with each other in the classrooms, we may want that to be the case, but it's just not true anymore. And we've, we saw that quote from the US Surgeon General, and it's everywhere in research around education right now. It is critical for us to teach these students, all of our students, around these self-regulation, social, emotional skills, so that they can learn the things that we know are important. It's, they have to be able to learn in order to learn.
I.
I see, I'm, I'm fighting a brick wall here, and I see that, but, once again, uh, if this was a great program, it's great to bring in teachers and kids, and yeah, this is great. What about the ones that don't want it? We didn't bring in any of them. And I know for a fact, there's people and teachers and students and parents that do not want their kids going through this program.
And so if.
So, answer me this.
Yep.
We spent forty-eight thousand dollars on a program for three hundred kids, three thousand kids. And fifth, or thirty-five hundred of them parents say, no, I don't want my kid going through that. Then we just spent forty-eight thousand dollars for five hundred individual kids.
The, uh, I think one of the things you saw in the data was that there were, um, it wasn't universal that they liked the, uh, second, the, I'm sorry, the character strong program, but it was less liked in the, the second step program, so we absolutely recognize that not everyone's gonna like every program that we do, and that's true across any decision that we make, we're not gonna get universal acceptance on anything that we do. We are working to find the best possible thing that we can for the greatest number of students, that's going to make the greatest difference in their learning.
Anything.
Program does that.
Anything that steers kids towards CRT and woke programs
Does do that.
Absolutely is not what we should be promoting.
I agree, and that's, this program does not do that in any way, shape or form.
No, the research I found said different.
I understand that there are a lot of opinion pieces around there that suggest that might be the case, it's just not true when you look at the data.
Well, that's your opinion.
It's my opinion, it's backed up by a lot of data, a lot of data.
It's a, it's a hard one to, uh.
And if you look at the curriculum that we, we provided you examples of, there are no examples of CRT in there.
Oh, yeah, you're always.
What percentage of the curriculum did you show us?
You are welcome to look at every piece of it, every parent, every, every community member is, is, is able to look at every piece of everything that this, this program has, and you won't find any examples of what you're suggesting in there.
Any, any parent can go on and log in and create their own account and go through every lesson in its entirety. So if there's a question on values, let's say for this lesson, you may log in and you may go through that, and you can determine whether or not you think that it's appropriate, or it's not appropriate for your child.
So the different pastors that I've talked to about this.
I welcome the.
We're saying that they don't know what they're talking about.
I haven't met any of them, I haven't spoken to any of them, and I have no idea the extent to which they've looked at the curriculum. And I, I welcome the conversation, if they wanna come and look at every piece of it, I, I welcome that.
Okay.
Okay, I have questions, so what are we using right now for this?
Second.
Second step. Second step.
Yeah.
And our students, so there, there is this course, and our students here said tonight that they spend an hour of class staring at a screen.
Well, I don't know that.
Even if they go forty-five minutes, how much social learning are they getting staring at a screen?
So I think.
Throughout the rest of the day.
Not an accurate representation of what's actually going on in the class, I'd love for you to come and see what's actually going on in the classrooms, I can show you that students often work with a screen in front of them while they're working with other students, that happens sometimes. There are also times when they're asked to do an assignment on their computer.
Okay.
So, the screens are used as a learning support, much like paper and pencil was used as a learning support.
So, okay, and now we have this class, second step, takes an hour, forty-five minutes, I think I read here, forty-five minutes to an hour. Couldn't that, what are, what are we losing?
Sorry.
Class are we losing to put this in place? What did, what did we get away with, away from? To put this.
We did anything, we got.
So, but we still only have six hours a day, seven hours a day? Now you added another class, that's another hour, so how did you gain more classes, same amount of time?
So, to be honest with you, I wasn't here when the district started working with social emotional learning, I'd have to defer to the administrators who were here.
Okay, I mean, I'm just throwing this out.
I get it.
I'm looking at you, cause we're talking.
Yeah, yeah, no.
You know, what classes did we give up?
If we do this, are we getting rid of the other one?
Yes, it would be.
The second step actually expires the tenth of this month. Um, and so in those five years ago when we started, um, it's built into the classroom time, and they break it up into smaller chunks in the elementary level, so that they can reiterate those skills throughout the week, and they help the students generalize those skills. At the middle school level, um, it's done currently in health classes, it's part of the health curriculum from here. It's not something that's done every day, and something that could be done like weekly, and so our plan for uh, the programming now would be during wind class, so we would, um, during wind, we would have those lessons be instructed and then preferably earlier in the week, so again, as they go throughout the week, they can reiterate those skills.
So we've actually lost two core educational classes by putting wind and social learning?
It would be part, it would be during wind, it wouldn't be an additional class, it would be during wind.
But what I'm getting at is now you're replacing, that's two separate classes, even though you're combining them on your schedule, it's still two different classes. What happened, I mean, how much history are they learning? They're learning how to how to not have hurt feelings, but are they learning about the history? Are they learning about current events that's going on?
Yep, that's part of their history curriculum, and so when they're receiving this curriculum, it is during the wind time. So they're, they're not having two separate classes.
I, I still don't, I think you're taking away, I think you're getting away from real education and you're trying to manipulate minds.
Chris, Christina, can you, guy, as, as a teacher that, you know, deals with this, can you kind of express what goes on and stuff like that?
So, I think it, it's really important to understand the way the schedule works, so when the students come into school, they are, they are given this wind time, which is basically an extended, if, if you go back to when we were in school, it would be, would be like an extended homeroom period. So they're not losing any classes, they're actually getting instruction during a part of the day where there are no core classes scheduled. So they're still getting all of their ELA, all of their math, all of their social studies, all of their science, all of their itinerants, everything that we built into their schedule, they still get. What we're doing is we're adding an additional layer because there is a significant need. And I am, I am a teacher of reading, and I am a teacher of leadership, and I work with kids every single day. And there is not one day, not one block that I don't have to manage somebody's emotions and help them calm down and help them rationalize how they're feeling. Because the world that we live in doesn't allow our kids enough time to be able to do that. And if we don't do that for our kids, then we're creating our own problems, we really are.
I, I think you're feeding the problem by doing so.
Okay.
My, my opinion.
I would very much.
School, which was a long time ago, you know, there was still the same amount of hours, you started at eight, you went to three. We had all our classes, we didn't have wind, we didn't have social learning, we didn't have any emotional things, we didn't have that stuff. We had actual educational classes that taught you real life situations, we didn't even have computer class back then. And you have that now, so there's one more class that you took away from other reading, you took other time away from other classes.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
So, when we were in school, we also didn't have the technology that we have right now, we didn't have the social media influence, we didn't have all of everything at their fingertips, the, these kids are constantly being influenced because they have something in their hands that never shuts off. So it's very different right now, the world that our children are living in is nothing like the world that we grew up in. It is completely different.
Maybe we should adopt some of the policies going around the United States on cell phone use in school.
We've already banned cellphone use in school, it doesn't happen. Our kids have their cell phones in their backpack from the time they enter the building until the time that they leave. But when they leave us, they're on their phones all the time.
You just said they're in their hands all the time, so that's, that's why I asked that.
Outside of school.
I do have one question, when was the curriculum meeting?
It was on the seventeenth.
Okay, if it was on the seventeenth, the letter I read went out on the sixth, it's obvious that uh, these kids didn't go through this whole program uh, since the seventeenth. So who authorized the program to start after we said, no, it needs to go back to curriculum first? If that's what we're saying, we did.
Chris, with, uh, the curriculum, okay, and our policy, when change, looking at a new curriculum and stuff like that, um, they're allowed to do a pilot program to determine whether something is going to fit the district or whatnot, okay?
Okay.
And whenever they do a pilot program, it doesn't go to the entire district, it only goes to certain areas. And if I'm not mistaken, that's what happened here, okay, and.
So when we voted it down, it was already in effect.
They already had a pilot program to see whether it was something that they wanted to do. Okay?
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, that's.
Say, why are we even sitting here, just let everybody do?
Well, I mean, that's, that's the way it goes, is that you actually, you know, you wanna pilot something to see if it actually works, if it doesn't work, there's no point bringing, wasting the time any further and just get rid of it, okay? So.
Well, I hope we don't end up in a lawsuit over it.
No, I, I just feel that this is, forgive the terminology, but this is making our children soft. You're military.
Mm-hmm.
What would your drill sergeant have done if you, if you said, I need to go sit in the corner here and cry for a minute?
Oh, I'd pull out my red card.
That's not what this is about.
I know, I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, okay, I do.
That's, that's truly the world we're heading to.
Our society is not what it was thirty years ago, thirty years ago, to have a child have divorced parents was very, very rare. Nowadays, half the parents aren't together, our kids don't know who some of their parents are, they're being raised by grandparents. The parents that are raising or have, they're being raised by, I'm sorry, addicts and alcoholics who don't care where they are at any minute of any day, do not guide them, do not teach them these things, these kids will not be successful in life if they are not taught these skills, and if we don't teach them, nobody is going to, and that society is going to degrade even more.
We've got.
No, it's not.
We've got, we've got a whole room full of, of administrators sitting here, and I'm gonna tell you right now that you ask any one of them, and I can ask them point blank, Tyler, or, or Nick, or any of the people here that are administrators, how many times are you dealing with kids that are, are going off the rails emotionally in, every single day? You've got kindergarten kids coming to school who have not had any kind of guidance at all. They don't get it at home, they come in, they are no more ready for school than flying to the moon because they've never had any kind of guidance. And you guys wanna throw this, this, this program off to the side, and I, I could ask every one of these principals, and everyone will tell you that they have kids that come in and they, they have all kinds of emotional issues, and it's not because they're crying in a corner somewhere. It's because dad or mom probably were, like Tracy said, were shooting up that, that, the other night, or because they got, they, they were beat up or something, they come in there and, and they have all kinds of issues. And then we wonder why these kids come in and throw chairs, or why they freak out in a classroom. And then we wanna sit here, and there's nothing in that, that curriculum that has one iota about CRT or anything else. And teachers have to follow whatever's in that curriculum, and you can look through every single page of it, and I did, I looked at a lot of it today. And there's nothing in there that says anything about critical race theory or any of that other crap.
So the kids that are coming in are acting like you are right now with the temper.
No, I'm not acting like, I'm trying to make a point, Chris, just like you always do.
Wait, alright, enough. Alright. I knew that this was gonna be a very, uh, heated issue.
No.
Yes, so, alright.
Whole crap onto our students.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
I'm sorry, there's so much on the.
No, alright, no, I'm.
About that, okay. This is sort of where I'm thinking and where I am right now, number one. I've gotten very intolerant of the school districts around the world buying more and more software for our students. On the flip side of the coin, I understand the need for software for education, so this is what I'm thinking. Um, it's a one-year contract, correct?
Correct.
Alright, one-year contract can be canceled. Now, eh, we can put in rules or directives, I'm sorry, directives to the superintendent to say, we want this data, this data, this data, this data, so it can be evaluated at the six-month point in the end, right before the contract is up. That's an option, here's another option, US World and News Report, every year. U S World and News report every year comes out with the five hundred and some or six hundred and some schools. I'm sorry, uh, grade, middle school, high school. And we are Keystone Central School District.
Mr. Cannon. Elizabeth has.
It's okay, that's fine.
The floor.
It's okay.
Statement over here, he's over here talking.
There are statements over there too.
I didn't hear anything else, I just, I did hear, I did hear you, so, alright, please, Elizabeth, continue.
Yeah, 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 thank you, thank you. So anyways, um, then on the other side of this coin is U S World and National News, their annual report on six hundred and fifty or so schools. And Keystone Central School District, since I've lived here over twenty-five years, has always been in the top, I'm sorry. Always been in the bottom twenty-eight percentile, always, we're stuck in the quagmire. Now, my question is, did you look at some report like that listing the top twenty-five schools in this country? Or if you want to just look at the top twenty-five in Pennsylvania, if you want to stay secular, what are they using?
Well, and Dr. Redmond, I think this goes back to our conversation earlier yesterday about you can't just compare other districts with us. Everybody's unique, everybody has their own makeup. So even though this program worked there, doesn't mean that that's going to work with our population here. I mean, I can tell you, um, State College, who everybody brings up and ranks very highly every year, they have this program.
Bless you, Roger.
Thank you. That's what, that's what I'm saying, if, if, what other, what, what other options, I, I understand you have done a lot of research on this, I understand that. What I'm saying is, for us to buy another software package is like, I don't feel like I've been given enough options, but I'm not saying you're not, you did not do your homework, I'm not saying that. I just, uh, I just don't feel that our school district is really going to get that much better with spending forty-two thousand dollars or whatever it is.
Forty-six.
Forty-six, since we've already been in the bottom twenty-eight percent since I've lived here. And I could be incredibly wrong, um.
Can I ask one more question?
I just wish there was something else.
She still has the floor.
Um, I, I don't want to have a time, and now I'm flipping the other side of the coin, trust me. I've been, I've been thinking about this ever since you brought it up. And I'm, 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 I want to stop thinking about it.
I want to stop thinking about it too.
Okay, um. I, I remember when I was on the curriculum committee, could have been a year and a half ago, two years ago, Megan might remember, um. Someone brought up, well, why doesn't Keystone write their own curriculum? Because we were going through a little bit of a phase to sort of play catch-up and you're buying this for curriculum and buying that for curriculum, software, software, software. And then Megan and her team, took her a year, it takes longer, they put together what I call Class A plus-plus curriculum. And you'll see it on the agenda, and they did that in-house together, and it took longer. Now, if we always, and I always hear this all the time, Elizabeth, we hire professionals. We have professionals working at this district, why can't they come up with their own, not software, but their own program? And get the teachers involved, just like Meg, um, Megan Halded, teachers involved, principals involved. And why can't they do it? And we give them time to do that, I mean, that would be my first choice. Instead of throwing another program at the kids, another program at the staff, and then on top of that, we have to pay annual fees. So my first choice right now, don't buy this. Let our teams develop their own because they have enough skill, they have enough education to do a good basic program. Or B, if the majority of the board does purchase this program, there's very tight stipulations in there, directives that are given to the superintendent that will track X, Y, and Z, and we keep getting reports, and I mean real reports and feedback from the principals and the teachers. So, those are my two options, I'm stuck on the fence.
Okay.
But my first one is do it in-house first.
Okay, Chris.
Further on down the list here, we have that one coming called ripple effect. That's another social emotional learning.
Yes, that went through the co-curricular committee.
Okay, I'm ask, I'm asking because how many of these different programs do we have to have?
So that one is very unique in which the purpose of using it in the learning center for students who have specific behaviors that have earned them their seat in there. These lessons can be specifically targeted to that student for that infraction. So if that student is, let's say cursing out a teacher, there could be lessons specifically assigned to them for appropriate language in school. Um, how else you can manage your aggression? Or what are other ways to express yourself? You know, the, the laundry list goes on, um, and there's multiple of them that follow through, so he doesn't quite get it the first time, you know, we can go through a second round of this. And it's more of a restorative approach where these are very targeted interventions to that specific behavior. So we're not just sending them to sit there and do their work, we're actually giving them something to do to learn and respond to so that they can do different next time, and hopefully not end up in the learning center a second time.
Well, with, with all these social emotional learning programs that we're talking about buying and using and what we do and all the violence and the bullying and problems we have going on in this school. How's that social emotional learning teaching going? Because I don't think it's doing a lot.
Well, I think, uh, you heard from both the Bucktail students and from the Central Mountain students that said that things are dramatically better this year as opposed to last. And last year, at the end of the year, they reported things getting better compared to the year before. So I, I would push back on that idea and say they are getting better and the students are telling us that.
How long have students been in school this year? Just a couple of weeks. That's nothing to base that on, I'm sorry.
I'm hearing about the teachers and the administrators that want to do this, what about the teachers and administrators that don't want to do it?
So, on, once again, uh, we're never going to find anything that's going to get universal acceptance.
Okay.
So we do the best thing based on the, the greatest good for the greatest number of people. Knowing that we're going to have to push some people in a direction that they may not want to be pushed, that's just the way change happens.
Okay.
Uh, if I could, I think there are a couple of principals that want to speak on the, the last point that was brought up.
Yeah, I can, uh, Tyler Barth, principal at Robb Elementary School, and, um, I just got to be completely transparent and open right now. In fifteen years as an educator, I have never felt the way I feel right now. I have never felt this in my life. And the fact that we're sitting here making comments about children who face more adversity in a day than I did in my entire life is humiliating. And with all due respect, I don't think that you understand what we deal with every day because we love what we do. And I don't think you understand the deficits that our kids walk through the door with. I've been an educator for fifteen years, I'm blessed with a family, I'm blessed with a life that is wonderful. But every single day, I face children who have nobody in their corner, not a single person. And the only reason they come to school is because we teach social emotional learning. They don't come to school for math, they don't come to school for reading. And there's only one way to get to reading and learning, and it's through relationships. I'm absolutely devastated right now, and I don't do this. But the fact that we're sitting here talking about children like they're pawns is disheartening. And I'm very disappointed right now. And I would invite any one of you to come to Robb Elementary School anytime, any day. And I will show you the magic that's happening there personally. And you want to talk about loss of instructional time, I'll tell you what loss of instructional time is, is when a six-year-old has no idea how to manage their emotions and trashes a classroom, and then we come here and we hear about all the disruptions that are taking place that you're talking about. If we don't teach them, who will? Who will teach them? I'm not going to get into politics, I'm not going to talk CRT, but I have never in fifteen years, I've never heard anybody in my building ever talk about it. I've never heard anybody assimilate anything we do to any of those theories, it's not happening. And I, I am, I am visibly upset, but I can't sit here any longer as an educator, as a principal of a very at-risk building and not speak up on behalf of my children. So whatever curriculum we decide to, to, to use, not use, please don't talk about our kids like they're soft. Don't talk about our kids in a negative light, and it may not be what you intended, but that's what I heard. It's not fair to them and they have enough to deal with. So I am here to say, as a building administrator, as a human being, as a father, I appreciate the efforts that our district has taken to educate students on their emotional regulation, their empathy and their ability to see people for who they are. And I just could not sit here any longer without saying that, I hope that I have not offended anybody, I hope that I have not come across as disrespectful. But I, I am very upset that, that we're having these conversations in the manner in which we are. And, and I just needed to say that as a person.
Thank you very much.
Sorry you're upset.
Yeah, I'd like.
That's not what I meant to be this whole thing.
Tyler.
But if we can't ask questions, why are we even here?
Yeah, I, my, my focus isn't on the kids, and I'm sorry.
My focus is totally on kids and I teach kids a lot too, I deal with them daily.
Uh, Jim Pledo, principal of Bucktail, I just want to provide some background information on statistics they provided. And they said discipline was down eighty percent, they're comparing the month of September last year to this year, so comparably at the same point of year, we're having much better results behaviorally. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Alright.
Can I say a couple?
Sure, Bill, go ahead.
Here quietly.
Yep.
I think a lot of stuff has been discussed. And, I mean, right up front, I'm going to say, I can't agree with you, I'm, uh, I'm very concerned, you're giving us assurances, but, and I read things besides Wikipedia. Okay? There's a lot of questions about the potential for harm and bad things happening with so, the social emotional learning for, uh, curriculum. So I'm concerned about that, very concerned. Um, Elizabeth brought up the, the, the ra, recent ratings. Out of the ten lo, ten local schools were dead last, we're four hundred and ninety-ninth in Pennsylvania.
How many?
There's seven hundred and forty schools, I think they rated six hundred and fifty, I forgot to write that one down.
Sorry.
Bucktail did, when I say we're dead last, that's Central Mountain, I keep, I'm sorry, I don't mean to diss Bucktail, but live down here, I keep thinking it is.
Bucktail improved.
Bucktail, um, is a little better, they're, they're three hundred and twentieth.
Bucktail won't prove.
Um, State College is forty-first. Lewisburg is forty-second. I think that the time, the limited time that we have needs to be spent on, I, I've, and I've, I've never had an employer complain to me about the kids coming with bad emotion, yeah, bad social emotional problems, they're, what they're complaining about is they can't communicate, they can't do math, they can't, you know. This is what we need, I think we need to be putting our time into. And as for behavioral modification, there are many ways of doing it now, it wasn't, I absolutely agree that we're a world apart from back to Plustaciian age when I was in school. But, you know, the first night I met you, you were telling me about the science of reading. And when you finished, I said, gee, that sounds a lot like what Sister Mary Josephs did seventy years ago, and you said, yeah, it is. Maybe it's time to go back to somebody other things. And how, what was our social emotional learning to control behavior? It was Mr. Minzer and Mr. Stenson and Mr. Shiplet, and none of them were friendly guys. Maybe that's what we need to get, and you say, this is the behavior that is expected. Anything other than this will not be tolerated. That's about it, I don't have, you know, uh, oh, the other thing is, I'm sorry, in a day, I think we should be minimizing the time kids spend in front of a computer screen. Yes, I agree with you, they, they have their owns and you can't control much outside of school, so, but you can in school. And I, uh, most of the stuff that I've read has suggested that printed things work better than electronic word anyway. Uh, I admit, I'm, 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 I'm a moron when it comes to this stuff. The kids have to learn computer skills, I want you to teach them that. But you shouldn't be sitting them down all the time in front of his computer screen all the time, you should be doing something else. One of the meetings that I, I don't remember whether it was at this meeting, I'm, my head's buzzing now. I don't know whether it was at this meeting or one of the other ones that I either watched or went to some of the, it was admitted that the teacher, every, no matter what you competent individuals outline as the way to go. When it gets down to the individual teacher, they can modify things quite a bit and have an influence on it, you know, and, and ways that may not be the way you intended. And so this, this is all going on like that, um. I'm going to try to take you up on your invitation.
Hmm.
I'd love to see it. Yeah.
Me also.
And that's, you know, uh, I'm.
I, I think honestly, that's probably the best way to understand what's actually happening is, and I've, I've said this before and I'll say it again, I invite board members to visit schools, let me know and we can get it set up, you would visit at any of our schools at any time.
I'd welcome the ability to do that.
You know.
Let me know.
Oh, one last thing, I mean, you know, you, you, you guys mentioned the military and things, there was no discussion, right? You were told this is the way it's going to be. And they're not in the military, you don't have to complete this call, but
Yeah, they could beat us.
Possible to say, this is the way it's going to be, and again, I lived through that, you know.
There's times where you'd like to. But.
Oh, one more thing. Elizabeth, on your comment of us creating our own curriculum, that's not done for free. Any teachers and administrators who are involved in writing curriculum are paid outside of that. So in the many hours that it takes to write a curriculum, we're going to be paying just as much.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate, most people didn't know that, but what I'm saying is if they did, I know they, I know they have the skill set. I know they have the skill set, and I think from what I've seen from what Megan's team did, it helped build that whole team stronger. So they've got a benefit of developing customized curriculum, and they got the benefit of doing this positive thing together, and that's why I'm just saying, I would like if they would let us know if they could just build their own and do the same template that Megan did, similar. Or maybe it's impossible. Sure.
I think, um, um, I think, I think your point in, in equating it with like science curriculum, for example, what you see on the agenda tonight, um, is that that is a step one of developing a so, a scope and sequence. Um, as you know, from being on the curricular co-curricular committee for many years, we usually always follow that up with a resource that supports that scope and sequence.
Right.
And so really, yes, we could have our teachers sit down and develop their own scope and sequence, but eventually they need resources to be able to teach that.
Yeah.
And when we forward approved resources like that, it actually provides, um, it provides us with a approved resource that teachers use which protects us as a district from teachers teaching it any way that they want to.
Absolutely.
Um, so I do understand what you're saying, but I think the ultimate end product would be still a resource that would match our teacher's scope and sequence, which I think would, I think it would end up with the same result, if you know what I mean. Because eventually you have to align a resource with what the teachers wrote. Um, and so I think at the end of the day, it's the same result, is that you need a resource, and this is a resource.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Megan.
Can we move on?
I just want to say one thing, I figure I might as well chime in while everyone else is, right?
Alright, Polly.
I just want to say thank you, Tyler, for standing up for your kids and, and being bold enough. I just wanna say thank you, Tyler, for standing up for your kids and, and being bold enough to say your feelings in front of all of us. That's very greatly appreciated, and I think you did a wonderful job articulating how you're feeling. Um, I also wanna say that before I brought this back to the board, I talked to administrators and, um, teachers and guidance counselors, and I wouldn't have brought this back to the board if I didn't feel that it was something that um, was needed. So I, after talking with them and, you know, understanding how they were using the curriculum and how much they needed the curriculum, being in the school myself as a volunteer, I haven't been there much lately. Um, but back when my oldest daughter was in elementary school, you could definitely see a need for social emotional learning, and if things are getting worse now, I'm sure that that's still needed. Um, but I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I wouldn't have brought it back if I didn't feel that the, the research that I did on it was valid.
So Paula, you're endorsing it?
I am.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Yeah, I just sort of want, I have a question, Scott.
Go ahead.
No arguments with anything.
Alright.
It was brought up that we have grant money, and if we don't spend it, that could jeopardize things, is there anything else? Is this a simple yes or no answer, Frank? Is there other stuff we can spend that grant money on?
Uh, it depends on how the grant was written, and, and I, I recognize it's not the simple yes/no answer that you were looking for. Well, when we write grants, we have to write it for really particular reasons.
Okay, I get that.
It would have to be for a new mental health resource, so regardless, it would have to be a new something. And like for second step, if you would go with that and we would renew our contract, we wouldn't be able to use it because that's something that we currently already have in place, new cancer plant, so it would have to be a new curriculum.
Thank you. So, one more with that. You just said that it costs extra money, outside money for a teacher or for staff to create a curriculum.
And you worked on outside of their work hours, they are.
Why can't that grant money be used for that?
It can't be.
It can't be for salaries.
Can't be used for salaries.
It's work outside of their work.
It would still, it would still be considered a salary though.
Yeah, so the, the, the grant really constrains us on how we can use the money, and it can't be used for salaries.
Salary if they're creating?
It would be considered overtime.
Okay.
Well, it, that's.
Well, I can say this, I, I'll support it as long as the school board members work together and put very specific directives to the superintendent, so this could be charted. And I don't know what those directives would be right now, but I'm just saying, then I would vote yes.
Okay, can we move on now?
I, I have a question.
I'm not sure who that person.
Name's Joe Kreitz, I was there earlier, the lady said that it's ending on the tenth uh, or the curriculum ends on the tenth for, is that, that going to be renewed? Or is this program you're talking about going to take place of that? And if nothing is going to happen, will it die there, or are we in limbo?
So the, if I understand, uh, your, your question, the, what we would ask the board to do is if uh, the board does not accept, uh, Character Strong or approved Character Strong, that they approve the purchase of the renewal of, uh, Second Step.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roger, can I say something to Tyler real quick?
Sure.
Tyler, I've, I feel your pain, okay? And I understand what you're going through. This isn't an attack on the kids, I'm here to help protect these kids. I work with kids at home, I teach kids for the game commission, I teach kids at my church. I work with kids all the time, and anybody that knows me will tell you that kids come first with me. I just wanna know that we're doing the right thing, because there's so much negativity over this. I wanna make sure we're doing it right.
Yeah.
That's all.
I appreciate that, and the other thing that I think is important to, to, to note is, and I appreciate your service.
Tyler, can you hold up, yeah, get.
Here, he can talk into this one.
I appreciate, I appreciate that.
And, and something that I just, and I appreciate your service to children, but something you also have to realize and recognize is those settings you just stated. Those children are there because they want to be there, so they present differently emotionally when they're there. Whereas sometimes school is not always, believe it or not, a preferred destination for children, so they yeah, so when they walk, walk through the, when they walk through the doors, you know, they're bringing a different emotion than in their setting. So, um, again, I, I hope that my moment was respectful and, and, and my invitation is genuine. Um, and I just want to, yeah, I would love to, love to have you there, and, um, I just, I just hope that we can agree that there's, there's children that have a substantial amount of need that's beyond anything we've seen before. Um, and that's, that's all that I'm hopeful as a building administrator, we can address those needs because if they're not stable emotionally math, reading, writing isn't gonna happen, I can tell you that one hundred percent factually, alright?
Just wanna make sure we're doing the right things.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, can we move on now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Athletic and Student Activities personnel, questions? Good. New science curriculum, questions?
I like what I read.
It's awesome.
Thank you, Megan.
Yep, Megan, good job on that one.
I wanna take the classes.
No.
It's my favorite topics.
No. Okay, uh, next, ripple effect. Questions on that, I mean, it's.
See, answered, if it's a specialty thing, I mean, it's another SCL program.
Okay, alright, overnight field trips, any guy, anybody got any questions on that?
They're wonderful, love them.
Kinda makes sense of what they're looking at doing, so. Alright, um, the MOU with ACC, E, uh, KCSD, CTC guidance.
I have no idea what this is about.
So, uh, earlier it was, it was brought up, uh, that Kurt wrote a grant, uh, in order to have a career and technical center guidance counselor.
Okay.
And so this is the MOU that we've created with the collective bargaining, or the teachers collective bargaining.
Oh, the bargaining unit.
So that we can have a grant-funded part-time counselor in the CTC center.
That's wonderful.
You gotta read up on this stuff ahead of time.
Sorry, that's this part of this.
Okay, adjourn.
I need a motion.
I make a motion when I adjourn.
Alright. We're done.